I'm going to call our Select Board Meeting. It's a special meeting for Goals and Objectives Setting. It is six o'clock on Thursday, June 22nd. We're in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. Remote participation, we are on Zoom. And this is being recorded for live broadcasts now on cable as well as recorded for additional broadcasts on YouTube and on local cable. If we can just start by doing the pledge and then we'll pop in.
Pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America. As a republic over which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this is just to the overview, this is really informal, kind of a working session. I think in talking with Austin, I think there's value if we kind of view this as our first reading of things and we get ideas out and everything, we take it back, let Office, the Office, Austin and Tamika kind of collate everything, come out with overarching themes, and also work with staff and boards and commissions to make sure that they're good goals. And then we'll come back probably at one of our July meetings and kind of ratify, ratify them moving forward if that works. So it takes a little bit less pressure off having a cohesive document tonight, but we get all the ideas out and then we can, gives everybody a little bit of time to think about. Awesome. Cool. There's pizza for everyone, drinks for anyone, help yourselves. And I guess I'll start by if there's public comment, we have a few people here if there's public comment.
You want? Randy Jordan, Rutland Fire Brigade and Economic Development Chairman, I guess. So do you want us to speak now or when it comes up or how would you like to handle that?
So, I mean...
So we're obviously here because of the Fire Brigade request of help with the gravel and asphalt in front of the old fire station that was talked about a few meetings ago. So you suggested that we come here.
Yep.
I don't know what else we can do to encourage that from what we did before, but essentially at the end of the day, the old fire station was doing in the upwards of $300,000 worth of renovations inside the building and some on the outside of the building. And there was an Eagle Scout project going on, which happens to be my son's, on the outside and we kind of tied everything together. In turn, part of Sumner's project was a granite curbing that was put in and we had asked Joe Buckley and others if it was okay to rip up the asphalt with intentions of putting down gravel and asphalt or some product on top to spruce it up. And the general direction was yes, shouldn't be a problem and why don't you ask for some ARPA money and this was six months ago or better. And in turn, we had no intentions of doing it initially and the intention came up to make the granite curving go in easier and smoother because of the elevation change and the optical illusion of the way the driveway was of some was ripped up and the arch to it. So it was advised by people that know more than Sumner does and the Boy Scouts, so why don't we rip the driveway out now? And took that out and brought in good base material that we had done at that time. And we really had no plan of how we were going to pay for it, whether it would be hopefully the town, because it was outside the building, of that part of Sumner's Eagle Scout project, which that's a pretty big nut for a kid to do on an Eagle Scout project and/or the Fire Brigade of some sort if we had to. But we don't really have a plan to physically do that. As you'll see, the Fire Brigade is exhausted. Most of their fundraising efforts that they have done and some grants that they have done there and their balance on that building is extremely low right now. In turn, that's why we had part of Sumner and others had got somebody to donate their labor of digging the material out, trucking the material in, and doing the asphalt if that's what we chose to do. So there was quite a bit of savings there. And through Joe Buckley and other people, we had determined that was about $14,500 worth of gravel and asphalt to go down there in that public way to do that. And then we estimated it was about $14,000 worth of labor to reinstall the asphalt and some for compacting the gravel and placing that in place as a whole, but not the full boat of it. So part of our philosophy was if there was some funds available, we're going to save $14,000 worth of labor if we had to send it out to bid or prevailing wage or any of that material going on there. And I think it would spruce up that area tremendously for the Fire Brigade as well as the Historical Society in regards to that. Cemetery is being rededicated on the 29th or 30th of this month with other money that they have received and also they're tying in Sumner's project with it. It's not really the Eagle Scout, but in turn it's, they're kind of putting both together. So our intention was to try to make it look as the best we possibly could for the 4th of July and that event there. So that's the plea there on that. We certainly can answer questions on that. Tommy has done all the math, but I mean, at the end of the day, we've done the math pretty tight of how many yards of material was going to come in. We were going to get it from the trap rock, asphalt was going to come in. We thought about other ideas there, but I think we'd like to stick with with the ideas that we have proposed here in regards to that. The other thing, while the Fire Brigade was meeting here a few weeks ago, we also have a big undertaking of an elevator in the building that we would like to at least throw out there and float out there. That's a major expense that's kind of down on the bucket list quite a ways for the Fire Brigade to do it. But it's coming to the end of the product going forward there. And we thought it would be a good idea at least to make you aware of it and if there happened to be some extra material, extra funds that we could possibly put toward that, it would be a great advantage of it. I know the question came up, is it a public building? Or will the public have the use of it? And the answer is yes. And as Tommy had stated at the meeting, the meeting that I was not present for, you know, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the American Legion and the Fire Brigade are all currently using the building and with intentions of turning it into a museum. We had hoped to have done this project before now. It's just during the COVID times, funds and fundraising ability coming in has been slower to that process. The quote that we have for the elevator is an older quote and we have reached out to the people to update the quote and the quote isn't available, hasn't been updated, but the quote that we have now includes the elevator and installation of the elevator and some woodworking to help finish the chamber of it. And that's at that $38,000 number.
Well, that's where we were at, yeah.
And we anticipate that number is likely to be higher, but we want to at least give you a number of where to start with to do an elevator.
Handicap lift.
A handicap lift to get you from the first floor to the second floor. There is bathrooms on both and it would really make that building come closer to the end of that there. So those are the two things that Tommy and I are here on behalf of the Fire Brigade and the Eagle Scout product to do it and to consider it. So I have spoken to the contractor in regards to, I wasn't certain what your goals were for tonight, whether there would be some inclination that this could be done. And with the open house is next Friday night. If you guys kind of gave us the nod and the shake that potentially that money could be available, the contractor is willing to get the work done before next Friday night to help make that, put some icing on the cake for the event overall. So I have had that conversation with Mark Sinkovich, who's the one that's very gracious to assist in this process on that way there. While I'm standing and enrolling or rambling here is the Economic Development has been working diligently through the previous town administrator and through Dave George doing that. And we had come forth and we think it's Economic Coordinator or I'm not 100% certain of what we called it, but in turn the central, we had a, somebody from the Central, the Regional Director down there and Worcester came up and met with us a few times and she actually lives in Clinton. And they had put it out to have an Economic Development Person for them as a contractor, not as an employee. So there's no benefits and they paid them a flat rate. I believe in Clinton it was $55,000 or $65,000 all in do it. They didn't give them hours to work, but they gave them projects to do it. And we thought that was a great idea for the town of Rutland and do that. Roll the clock back a little bit, in October and November, there is a grant that comes out. I can't tell you from who, but there's a grant that comes out that potentially can fund that particular position. In turn, we, the Economic Development Committee, felt that hey, why don't we get a person in there now to be able to help write some grants that we, the committee, didn't have a lot of insight of how to write the grants to get that particularly to do it. But that grant, I won't say is a guarantee, but it's an easier grant to get, especially if you partner with another community to do it. We had done some outreach back then before the grant was due and Barry had showed some interest and Austin had a visit with us the other day at our meeting and also said Hubbardston or other communities like that may be interested in partnering with us to do that. I think that person has the ability to do a lot of things for us. We have written a RFP, is it called an RFP?
I think you provided a job description.
That we had sent forth for you, the Selectman and the Town Administrator to consider of what came from our, and that came from Clinton with a little bit of tweaking from the Economic Development, David George to do that. I think it's something that really should be considered because I think David George had an awful lot on his plate. I think some of the job description that had gone forth would help take some of the pressure off of David George and help with some grant writing and but yet really boost our great community that we have here is, and everybody says that the thing that Rutland is really strives much farther and leaps and bounds ahead of other communities is our community spirit. And our best asset that we have in Rutland is the community spirit that we have as 4th of July and other events like that, the band concerts that go on there. Holden is knocking on the door now of all the things that they're doing down there. One of our committee members works with Holden Economic Development, Sabrina there. And in turn, I guess we'd like to stay one step ahead of Holden as we always have done in the community spirit of things. And I think this person would be a great asset to it. I strongly encourage you to consider that position to fund it for a one-year term with intentions of coming October, we could possibly get a grant to do it with another community to kind of slingshot it forward and then possibly we can see the value of it in the first year of life or two with the grant that, oh my God, how can we live without this person? Similar to, we never had a town administrator a number of years ago and similar to, we never had a town planner. It's things that should be considered. I'm, can I answer questions the best I can?
So do you guys want to ask, do you have questions? We can start with the Fire Brigade stuff because I know that that was something that had come through at one point and then we kind of pushed it and said, no, we wanted to have a larger conversation. They're here to answer questions, so I don't know if you have any questions right now or if you want to just have a conversation and they're available either now or we can reach out to them for additional questions.
Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I think it sounds like it was a project that was started before anybody said, great, we have the money, which wasn't a good idea. And I'm not against it. I just, my stance has always been until we figure out, you know, we have projects that I just think are more important. I'm not against it. I hope we were able to do it, but until we do that, I've had people come up in town and thank me for holding off and not because they're anti-Rutland Brigade, but they just, let's figure out what the heck we're doing for us before we just, I feel like the year I've been on it, you know, committee comes in 10 grand, five grand, six grand, three grand and we just keep cutting this money. And, you know, let's pump the brakes a little bit. Everyone's in a rush, oh, we got a guy that can finish it in 10 minutes. Let's get it done. That's my only beef. I'm not against it. I hope we're able to get it done, you know? I'd like nothing more than to put a gold plate to drive it up. Right now, let's figure out, you know, other things we need to do. That's my only stance. It's been my stance since the beginning. I'm not against the project. I just, you know, before we start cutting checks again, you know, we're about to get a new DPW Director, a new Town Planner. We're working on getting grants. I mean, let's, let's try and just kind of figure it out.
I think that, I mean, this is, I think, leading segue into our Goals and Objectives conversation. I think it sounds like one of the things is to really focus on the remaining ARPA money. I just pulled the numbers up. I think roughly what's not been allocated yet, now we have some that has been allocated and maybe not fully spent, but what we haven't allocated at all is just under $440,000. I think it's $436,000 and change as of the beginning of May, I think. And I don't think we've done anything with the new board.
We don't know what's going to be approved, the earmarks that we put in for.
Right, right, right.
We don't know what's up ahead and we may need that money.
Right.
It seems like a lot, but it really isn't what it comes down to.
Well, right.
Right, no, no, I just wanted to put it out there for everybody and anybody that's listening that that's where we are right now with what we had. I think the town had received almost 1.8 million total, something around there. And a lot of it, you know, we had some larger projects that were water sewer infrastructure and cable infrastructure upgrades at the water sewer.
Yeah, it needs to be upgraded, right?
And so we've done a lot there. And so I think Becky sent, I think, maybe a month ago, an update as to kind of where the money has gone so far. And maybe we can take a closer look at that and see where, where the money's gone, if it's been kind of equitable, because we know water sewers, stuff that needed to be done, but it serves 50% of the town. It doesn't serve 100% of the town. There's a whole lot of stuff, different buildings need things. Some, some of the buildings only serve a very small percentage of the town. And so, so is it, is it an equitable distribution to the broader Rutland community and not just a few select?
Tom Hall's going to lead a lot of work between elevators and redoing the second floor. There's going to be money that we need to spend. And that's all my only, I respect you guys. This isn't, I, you know, I know, you know, I just, right now, I think it's, it's always been just timing for me. Just let's wait and see what we, you know, once the money's gone, it's gone. We can't get it back.
But there's potentially more money coming, is that correct?
Well, potentially isn't a guarantee, but you know, that's, I mean, we don't know. We're hoping.
I was at a meeting, Town Selectmen's meeting over in Spencer. We have a project in Spencer for the farm that we run over there. And in turn, they said there were some communities out there that haven't spent their money and they're not likely to get any more money. The communities that have spent their money in full are likely to receive more money. And that came right out of Ann Goby's mouth, so. And I think Austin and Gary had heard that before I had spoke to them in regards to that. I realize it's no guarantees.
Yeah.
Now, in regards to some comments that you had, if Leah doesn't mind, can I just have a little bit of a rebuttal there? I completely under-
That's-
Okay?
I mean, I don't want it to go on forever. I think we have, but, I mean, I think, I think that, I-
Maybe, maybe I can help clear things up a little bit.
Yeah, go.
I, I appreciate what you guys have done. And like Tom, you're valued in the community. You've done a lot with that building. One of the things I'm a big believer on is protocol. The town has a bylaw that says anything of town-owned property that is a capital build-out or a huge maintenance issue that costs more than $10,000 and will last at least five years has to go through CIPC. Joe Buckley should have known that and told you that before you even requested money from us. So that's the only thing I will say, is that we have to evaluate the CIP bylaw. Not me, this is a bylaw that was put in 15 years ago. That should be done first. So I would recommend that you guys get that to the CIPC for our next meeting and so we can move on that. The fact that you've got it half-paid for is a big plus on that. And I think it needs to be done, but I'm a big believer in getting it done the right way.
I don't want to be here all night, but can I ask a question to Harry?
Yeah.
So part of our, our both committees that I'm working on, right?
Yeah.
Is all, so I understand what CIP does and I understand the limits and the thing. Has all the ARPA money gone through CIP? If it's large expenses?
No, because some are salary. Some are maintenance items that were less than $10,000. So there are a lot of things that did not go through ARPA.
Right.
But the main issues, let's take the Wood Studio, I mean, the Wood House.
Yes.
That came through CIPC. That work that was being done. Even though the Wood Studio is not a department or a committee of the town, of the Wood House. So the stuff that needed to come through, Joe Buckley, a lot did come through our department. Now, maybe there was one miss there because I didn't sit on the ARPA committee. But the big stuff should have come through the CIPC. So I don't have a problem with evaluating and saying, is it deserved? I drove up there. Yeah, it does need to be topped off. It does need to be cleaned up. But I just am a big believer, if we're going to spend this money, everybody has a fair playing field and it should be done the right way.
So I guess, if I may, I think we're going to try, I think there's some confusion about the CIPC bylaw, which I'm looking at right now just because I don't know that a driveway parking lot is considered. In the past, have, has CIPC approved driveways and parking lots? I don't know.
We, it has come through for the fire station, the police station. All those driveways being done came through the prior DPW and we're evaluating it. The problem was there was no money for the Select Board to allocate to it, but it's been recommended.
And I guess my other question is, is it, is CIPC, does CIPC oversee, and I'm not trying, but ARPA funds or funds that aren't town-appropriate, that aren't taxpayer-town-appropriated? I don't know. That's my unfamiliar familiarity with the, with the bylaw.
Our job at CIPC is not to recommend funding. It's to recommend projects. Analyze and recommend projects. We can say we think you should use free cash or there should be a bond out there or you can use ARPA money, but that's not our purview because that is the Board's purview. Our purview, go ahead.
Just do, I have a question because I'm also, maybe it's not clear for me either. It just says, prepare for the committee information concerning all anticipated projects requiring town meeting action for the period specified. So town meeting appropriates, but ARPA and some grant funds aren't required appropriated.
Well, if that, if, we've always, even the Wood Studio, all that stuff had to be appropriated. So if, if you want to, in our paint, I've been running that way for 15 years. If that wants to change, then that's fine. The Board can change that. The bylaw can be changed. But our understanding was if it's a capital investment in the town, it needed to go through CIPC. So.
To Harry's point, I think at the very least, the, the point of the committee, like you noted, is to have an overall understanding of what projects town needs. So regardless of where the funds come from, the recommendation of what's the priority list.
I think-
Well, I think- And I don't want to get into a big discussion about CIP because I know we have a lot of work to do here. But we have close to $20 million on the books that we're looking at, okay? You've seen it, Austin? And on an average basis, we're lucky if we, if 100,000 to 200,000 goes through. There might be one big project for a truck that's 150,000. But our job is not to, our job is to maintain the tax base and try to hold the expenditures within reason so the town doesn't get into trouble in making recommendations to it.
I think what may be helpful for, for the Board, for the community, for interested applicants for ARPA funds is, one, there's, I think, some outstanding funding. We have to, I think it would be prudent for the new Board to take a look at these projects that have. I think just a quick glance, there's just under a million dollars of unexpended funds for projects that just have maybe had no progress at all.
Okay.
So take a look at, I think, maybe a goal would be to take a look at some existing unexpended funds and then possibly, and I'm just thinking at the top of my head right now, maybe allocate a certain portion of that funds for community projects and make an application process for Fire Brigade, anyone else who may be interested, Little League such, who may be interested in funds under the Board with an application process and it could be an open transfer process. That may be-
I think that's a great idea. That's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is, is, you know, you've seen meetings in the past, past Boards, and they okayed this funding and then either the project's not done or it's half-done or, and-
Well, the senior set an example. We appropriated $30,000 for a study that's been sitting there for years.
Right, and, and nothing's being accomplished and I just don't want to see that happen again. Let's just try and-
I mean, we do, time is of the essence. I know, you know, it's, it's a year and a half, but a year and a half will go pretty quickly.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we want to, well, actually, we have a little bit more time. I'm thinking of a different company. We have to obligate all the funds, which we did. We need to spend them. We have another year and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. But even still, I think having a plan moving forward for all of these projects, having a status update and you can add that to my list of responsibilities and tasks to do, to accomplish, to get a status for the Board for all of these projects and see, you know, what's the feasibility of these projects getting accomplished? And if, if it's not feasible, possibly reallocating those.
You know, like Tom, you know, I think things should be done, but I also kind of feel bad that they got caught in this situation.
Right, it was bad timing. Yes, it was, it was.
I, I feel bad for that, you know?
It's tough because the previous Board kind of kicked it to the new Board saying that we, the new Board would most likely consider it and so.
I don't think the Department should have given the thumbs up to do it either when nobody-
In respect to Joe, he didn't give us, he knew what we were up to and I asked if we could rip the driveway up.
Right.
He did not tell us about money. It was somebody in an office up there that maybe Austin sits in now and had another Selectman.
Well, and then maybe Joe, I'm not blaming Joe. I know what you're saying.
Joe, you gotta be transparent.
You brought up Joe, that's the only reason I'm mentioning his name. I, I know, I know. I'm not blaming him.
I mean, and I think in all fairness to me, I think you just hit the nail on the head, right? Maybe the scenario is kind of ironic with me, right? The barn doors have been open for quite a while here on ARPA money, right? Now all of a sudden Randy Jordan comes with his herd of cows and wants to run out the door and get some money and you shut the gate. That's what I feel like.
Well, and unfortunately, I think you're probably right, but it has nothing to do with Randy Jordan. It has to do with, you just happen to be the guy. You were next in line, Randy. I don't know what to say. At some point, the bond gates had to be shut.
But Randy, you're not the only one.
Right.
Believe me.
Yeah, don't take it personal. It's not personal, but-
You are not the only one.
We'll get it done. It's just a matter of-
But there's other monies that have been spent in this town.
Yeah, a lot.
Recently, without funding and overages and all of a sudden, hey, let's give them the money. Somebody came up to me and says, hey, why don't you pave it and then send them a bill and figure out how they're going to pay for it?
No.
That's not the way we roll.
I hope not.
I, I just, go ahead, like two seconds. I understand CIPC, I've dealt with it a number of years and right along.
Yeah, you've been there for the 15.
But I guess when, when I, when I was doing this, putting these numbers together and saying, putting together the idea and the plan, Randy said we didn't have a plan. We do have a plan. I wasn't thinking of CIPC from a standpoint of if we're going to buy a DPW truck or we're going to buy some other things, which that bylaw calls out. I was thinking of this, this is just like a line item. It supplies in a budget, which we have budget line items that are more than $10,000 to do things.
Right.
These are just, you know, the, doing the project, we're getting all free labor to do the rest of the project. So this is just supplies to get to that. It's not a thing or a, you know what I'm saying, a vehicle or a unit or something like that that goes to that criteria, that's all I want to say.
You know what? If you guys can give us the time, we can discuss it tonight later on.
Well, that's fine, yeah.
You know, it just, I, I-
We just want to make sure you get information if you have questions or you get, you know what's going on, et cetera. So that's, that's, that's what I mean.
Well, I feel like tonight is the start of that.
Right, I agree, right.
Getting, you know, just being on the same page somewhat as far as
Yeah.
priority list, you know, it's obviously a project that needs to be done. I don't think anybody, like you said, I don't.
Well, and like I said here before, that's not, we, we leased the building and that's what we've been working on. The outside, we're just trying to do that to be good guys. We want to get it done so it looks nice. It's for the town, not, yes, is it for us? Yes, but it's for the town.
The town counts on pressure.
So anyways.
I don't care, but if it's a dollar.
I think moving forward to keep the meeting kind of back to the Goals and Objectives, I did put up as our, one of our goals is to really have a deeper dive at the ARPA funding. We know that there's about $360,000 remaining as completely unallocated, as Austin mentioned. There's some left that, for items that were allocated but weren't fully spent. There's some that money was allocated, but no movement was done on. So we need to, I think the Board should review, Austin can review and send to us the outstanding, outstanding allocations. And then we can, as a Board, consider creating, setting aside a certain amount of funds. I know in the past, it's not just been for community funding, but also- Um, I know in the past, it's not just been for community funding, but also to, to Randy's point about economic development, that, um, some other communities had done kind of an economic development grant application for local businesses or something, to give them a little bit of a, a head start or something, um, in as well. So that's something I think that the board, um, it sounds like is leaning towards definitely the ARPA funding.
Yeah, I think Austin brings up a good point. Not only on ARPA funds, but on all the funds out there. What can we gather?
Right.
What's sitting in that field that hasn't, Randy's term hasn't been mowed yet? You know, and we can get it back.
We might be surprised.
What's the process for that if it's already been allocated to a project that hasn't gone anywhere?
So if it's ARPA, um, the board can, can reallocate by vote of it. By vote at.
That, just this board? We don't have to do anything with town meeting to do that?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the, um, ultimate flexibility of ARPA is it doesn't have to be appropriated by town.
Okay.
Now, um, Tamika provided a list of, uh, warrant articles that were, um, voted on at previous town meetings and, um, you know, some of the balances remaining for some of the outstanding warrant articles. Uh, warrant articles are a whole different story. Um, if you're looking to close out or, you know, reallocate some of the funds that were, uh, originally appropriated, that does require town meeting action. Unless, you have identified project, projects that are of similar nature from the original intent of the article. So for example, uh, there's an article that says library building. If there's a respective project for the library building that you, um, could reasonably fit into the original intent of that article, you don't have to go back to town meeting for that. You could reasonably spend those funds for a similar life fund.
Well, that's gone on for years. In other words, that's been the, the, more or less standard procedure. In other words, okay, so we go ahead and earmark money for it. And then, sometimes it gets spent, sometimes it just sits there. And, and, and there's a list of things here that are just sitting here now. So, yeah, in other words, you know.
And I think for some of them, like, that are a little bit more, um, detailed, like signage, Wachusett Street and Route sixty-eight, there's been a, I think, there is, um, just over twelve thousand dollars remaining in that from the, the original allocation of just over fifteen thousand. So, I think that having that intersection reevaluated and seeing if the si- the signage that there is appropriate, then that remaining would fall back to, to free cash, um, at the next kind of cycle.
So if you do, um, if you close out the article, it goes to free cash. If you reallocate the article, you can reallocate the purpose of the article.
Whatever we deem.
So you can change the purposes.
So like, I'm not sure for that, where it's specifically signage for that intersection, if it were signage for, cause recently we've had a lot of comments about Pleasantale and one twenty-two, right? If that, if something similar, if, I don't know how explicit that, that article was. Since it calls out that intersection, I think it was pretty explicit, but.
Yeah, you know, according to the chief, there's been really no problems at that intersection now.
Yeah.
So, if we can allocate.
Well, didn't they put up all those brand new stop signs or flash and wasn't that, that was part of the body?
Yeah, they got the flash, right?
Yeah, so.
I think some of it was grant funded, I think. But yeah, it's definitely helped over there for sure, so.
So, uh, just looking at the first one on this list, the community center parking lot that's been out there since twenty fifteen with nothing. So, is there a way that when we have things like this, we can put, call it a time limit, to say you've got X amount of time to do this, or it goes back? Like, why, how is this, sitting out here for, what are we, eight years now?
Right.
Maybe.
This is fifteen thousand dollars right there. Looking for it, sitting right there.
Well, maybe I can answer that one, is that the DPW came to the CIPC and requested money that the whole parking lot be redone.
Okay.
And some extensions on it. And at the time, uh, I, I don't even remember when the fifteen thousand got allocated, but that was not gonna be the whole cost to have it done.
No way.
So, so it was appropriated. We were hoping to get it done, but it never got anywhere.
It's probably triple that now.
I was just gonna say, well.
So that's why it's sitting there. I mean, it was, it wa- it wanted to be done for the seniors, but the money wasn't there. It didn't meet our criteria for importance. On our rating system, if you don't get thirty-two or above roughly, you don't even make it in the top ten.
Even if there's funding available?
Even if there's funding available, because some of the things may cost three hundred thousand, some may cost fifteen thousand. Some would be like an ambulance, that's a safety feature, that's a go. Some would be like a DPW truck, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That might not rate above something else. You could have that rated thirty-four, but the one below that, or the one above that rated thirty-five. So it all depends where they come in. So, that was our heart, I mean, keeping politics and everything else out of it, we had a rating system. So if the rating system worked, we had to follow it. So that's why that, uh, uh, Austin, am I pretty close on that one? That's why it's sitting there?
Uh, I believe so, but also I just have an additional. So, it's interesting that you mentioned, um, you know, articles that date back to twenty fifteen. So, in my previous community, we had a very strict town accountant that essentially if you, if articles didn't have any activity within three years, close it out.
Hmm.
Um, so I was a little surprised to see articles dating back that.
Don't be surprised.
So.
So, so you're saying that as a board, we have the right to close that article out? It doesn't have to go to town meeting?
Uh, still town, no, no, town meeting has the authority to close it out. I was just surprised to see how long articles we had still on the books.
Okay.
So, I, I know we, we wanna, of course, go through it. You said you would do some.
Yeah.
Work on, so, is, this I think falls into that, the, almost the governance item here.
It's ha- it's happened in the past that articles have been closed out, but technically if you, if the, the state losses, if once the article's sitting there and the per- the, the department that it's, uh, we'll throw it, what, assigned to or four or whatever, the department head has to say, okay, I finished, I haven't, you know, they haven't used all the money. We've finished this project and this X model, and they're supposed to turn it back into the treasurer's office.
It's kind of just like a bookkeeping thing. You wanna make sure that, you know, you know, twenty fifteen, that's.
But the town may have, the town may have a rule that says, if you're not done in three years.
And that's what it was like in my previous community.
Right.
You could put that, when you wrote, when the motion is written, or the motion is made on the floor, it could be blah, 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 for this, if this project is not finished within four years, the money returns to the, to the.
I was, I was just gonna say.
Accountant and the treasurer.
I, I completely agree with that.
I'm just saying, it could be, I don't know, that's been done, but I can, I can tell you in the past, cause I, it was a lot of articles sitting there, but you'd, sometimes, sometimes it takes two or three years for some of the stuff to get done.
Yeah.
So, and you have a little bit left, but.
But if we know that, I had it in mind.
I remember there was one board that went through the whole thing. They said, oh, they're all getting turned back in, but then they all went back, cause they couldn't, you couldn't do that. It had to be the department head that had to turn. Say, I'm done with the project, I'm turning the money back.
But I feel like there's gotta be something that if you're asking for money, you need to know that within a certain amount of time, there, there's a reason why you're asking for that amount, because there's work to be done. And it shouldn't be, I mean, unless there's like, concerns of getting labor, you shouldn't have to wait four years to be able to complete that project, so. Again, this part of the, the governance discussion, I think it would be a good discussion to put in. Are there some new parameters that we can prevent this stuff from just sitting out here to reallocate it and?
I put, review, sorry, I just put outstanding articles, review them, and then policy for, for length of time to act and, and just kind of fit in as we get to the governance, overall governance structure.
Yeah.
Um, I can say for some of them, the, they passed overwhelmingly at town meeting and with that, the board that was currently there had all the support. And then boards, the board changed and there was, it became political. And so that's why some of those didn't have movement. Um, some of it is, you know, the, the staff ta- tasked with overseeing it, didn't do, didn't do the work. So, um, I think that there are some things, and that, that's again, more of the governance policy, I think, um, for how to.
But, uh, through the chat, just so I understand, so it says community center roof replacement, ninety thousand. There's thirty-six hundred left, so I'm assuming the roof was done.
Roof was done.
So that thirty-six hundred can be reallocated, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, likely you won't, I would just wanna close that one.
I'll close it. I'll put it back in the, right. I mean, that's just sitting there.
Well, actually, there, I think there's, um, the roof needs a little bit of attention, so maybe we'll have to evaluate, maybe we can.
So the ninety thousand dollar roof needs a little bit of attention?
Yeah. I'm sorry to say that.
That's not like, that's the library.
Put your roof on, it always needs a little attention. I get so upset with it.
Anyways, but there, there must be some things in there we can grab a hold of and.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It seems silly, it's just sitting there.
I think overall, an evaluation of, of all the available funds, um, and that certainly can be an action item on this, is to create a report for the board to review and provide a plan looking forward for what to do with the remaining funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a policy going forward, what would you recommend as a timeframe for if it doesn't get done? If you haven't started it, it's coming back?
For articles?
Yeah.
Um, I can say my previous community was three years.
Okay.
Can we be on case by case? Because I feel like depending on what it is.
Well, even a building project, which you think that's probably the most complex.
Yeah.
Expensive, requires a lot of planning and execution, typically takes, you know, two years maybe?
But it, but, but if you're approving.
But sure, I think.
Say, say five million dollars for a building renovation, you should have pretty much all your studies done. You should have all your drawings done.
Right, that's my point.
So it should be able to start within a year.
Right.
If we do that, so.
Right.
Once you start it, that's a difference.
At least they'd have to come back and explain themselves. Whoever requested the money, like, why has it been three years and nothing's been done? What's going on?
I know in the case of, we had a project, um, that was, it was digitizing all town records. And they thought, you know, originally that was, I think their original quote was, it was gonna take a, a year and a half. It ended up being longer because they realized, there's a lot of town records to digitize. So it just took, you know, just based off of, you know, original estimates. Um, but that's, I think, where they would come back and provide essentially an update and allowing the board and, and town meeting to have a little bit of discretion to extend or modify that.
Okay.
I, you know, this is not, this is for you guys, but I just wanna put two cents in here. I would think that you would, just what you said, you make a, make a timeframe, but you leave some wording in it that says you can review it, because you tie your hands, then you get no choice.
Yeah, it should be reviewed, right.
But there may be circumstances where it does, you know, you say, Bill, we did some building projects here. They took two, three, up, and sometimes some part of that project has to go even further to get it finished, so.
Well, I even think of the TIP project. I don't think we allocated free cash for any of the TIP project, but the TIP project has been in the works for ten years, or, or seven or ten years. So, s- some projects just take longer, so, yeah. So I think if we can look towards a policy for that and kind of encompassing more of the general government stuff.
Yeah, there just needs to be a little bit more accountability and just.
I'm glad you brought this to our attention. I, I knew there was some out there.
Yeah.
I just didn't know that it was this bad.
That's right. I can't believe how much cash is sitting there.
Yeah, appreciate that, Austin.
Look, I mean, there's some serious dough sitting there not being utilized. I don't, you know, that's. But that's the problem. That's the point. Let's just try and get this together and figure out. We'll get it done.
Well, let's get that fifteen thousand dollars.
Hey, listen, I.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah, listen.
Can you find a like project?
I don't have any problem with that.
Awesome. I think that's perfect.
Like it was meant to be, the right dollar amount.
Do you guys wanna rename, rename yourself to community center?
Wait, we can't, we, we have community, we have to all the time.
Um, so to keep the agenda moving, um, there were a few things that we, I, I don't, I want the, this to be a board conversation. There were a few things on the agenda that was posted, so I just wanna mention them. Uh, we talked about managed growth, because we know that the current rate limitation bylaw sets in twenty twenty-four. Um, so, the board needs to figure out the, the stance, um, for that. Whether we have the option to renew it for up to another five years. Um, we have the option to renew it and continue to do additional work. We have the option to, um, renew it with something else, or, or not renew it at all. Um, we do have some options and how that looks.
Are we discussing that now, or that we just could?
I just wanted to, first I would just wanted to get these three, like, these out there, and then, cause there's more. Um, we talked also about the long-term financial planning, um, group, and it sounded like the consensus kind of was to keep it at the professional level, you know, Austin and department heads and really, and, and for me personally, I feel very strongly that the schools are included. When the schools make up sixty percent, roughly sixty percent of the budget, I don't know why we'd, we would exclude sixty percent of our budget. That, and that school would be the administration piece of both Wachusett and Bay Path, because they are both what make up that sixty percent. Um, and then depart, Austin has, um, re- had reached out to the department heads and he provided some department head, um, goals or priorities in, in their eyes. Um, and then I think also included were the previous board's goals and objectives, um, and then anything else that, that the board has, um, come up. So I don't wanna, um, I, I really want it to be dialogue and brainstorming and getting ideas out. And then we can look at kind of overarching themes, um, and how, how to best categorize them. And Austin will do some wordsmithing, and, and Austin and Tamika, and, and help pull them together. Yeah.
You, we're all set for now, and for you guys with questions?
I think so. I, I appreciate you guys coming in and having the conversation, and it sounds like if.
We'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Thank you for helping us.
It won't be tomorrow, but we'll get it done.
Okay, just by far.
And it's not personal, Randy. Randy, the game was a coincidence. It's not personal.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
See you guys.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Good.
I'm starting on pizza. Yeah, I was, help yourselves. So.
Yeah, I was gonna, same thing.
There's cheese, there's pork, there's chicken broccoli.
We were just waiting for it.
Um, tomato. I'll do it. There's house, which is like meat and veggies, and I think that's straight veggie. I think.
Straight pizza?
Yeah.
Pete, cheese is right there.
Right here, okay.
And help yourselves to waters or sodas or whatever. Um.
No hot sauce.
We can talk and eat. I'm probably not peak.
I guess a request as we're talking through ideas here and just looking at what was here. I honestly don't have any history behind what the previous goals of the last board were, but I'd like to create the goals that are, that they'll be measurable. Uh, I want us to be able to make milestones.
Doable.
Did we, did we meet these, not just, I mean, considerations for cost, what does that mean?
Right.
What, what do you, what's the goal? What's the, how do we determine whether or not this was met? Something that we can visually say, this is what we wanted to do.
Like the SMART goals.
Did we do it?
Right.
And if not, what do we still have left to do?
There's a old saying in a financial book for CPAs, and it says, you can't control what you can't measure.
Yeah. How do we know if we made the goal if we can't?
Yeah, so the SMART goals, right, are the specific, measurable, achievable, or attainable, relevant, and, and time-bound. And so I think, um, and, and I think personally coming out of, we have the master plan all but done, and there's a lot of stuff in there that, that although that kinda sits with the planning office, there's all different boards, commissions, department heads that need to play into that. That's kind of a, a twenty, ten to twenty-year document. Um, and so, I think also working as us, it's much easier to say, we've done, we've done this and this is what, what we've done versus we've talked about it and we're working on it, but it's an ongoing thing. I do think having the override pass and having a little bit more funding opportunities. A lot of, um, the concerns last year were HR-related, and we didn't have the capacity, the staff capacity to, to manage that. Not that, that, that it's going to be fixed overnight by any means, but that we have a little bit more, um, that we can invest in to get. So I one hundred percent agree, Jen, with kind of the.
I just think it helps too with the, a- again, with transparency with the, everybody in the community to show them this is what we'd like to accomplish, and how much are we?
That's a good point.
How are we taking steps to, to meet those goals?
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah. Communication, yeah.
Community is gonna see what, what's going on.
The progress, right.
Right.
What we're doing, what the town is.
Right.
This list we just pulled out of that unspent funds, that would drive people crazy.
It's, yeah.
The average person that, let's face it, isn't paying attention, because they're busy.
Well, if I show this, I'm gonna, you mean to tell me you have all this money and you passed two and a half?
Right, well, no, that's a valid argument. That's a valid.
It's true.
Seriously.
Not knowing how things, your average Joe is gonna go, what?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, so, that's, that's huge. I'm glad we, we talked about that. We can.
Yeah.
Yeah, but very transparent with the, with the, the town.
I was like the transparency and accountability part, right? Like, that, that you've trusted us with a big piece, and so, that's. So I think if I'm hearing, I'll put up transparency, accountability, like, across the board, specific, and then lift like financials. So, for me personally, the long-term financial planning piece is huge, um.
A progress report of projects.
Right.
Where always, you know, yearly or six or, or, you know, six months, so whatever it is, if there's a project every six months, tell the public, listen.
Yeah.
You know?
Something, something that's gonna show progress that we're making on a particular, I am a particular subject or whatever.
Right. Cause most of this stuff is stuff that the public won't see, it's not like a traffic.
Right.
And everyone knows what's going on in Pampagasse because they see it.
Right.
Right.
Most of the stuff isn't that case, you know?
That's right.
But I think this should be.
Been that way for years.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
These articles, we, these should be reviewed on some sort of regular, and by regular, I mean, it could be annual, it could be. Every eighteen months, whatever, just what's the progress on this? Do you, is it in the works? Yep, okay, keep going, you're doing what you need to do, worry about it.
Good job, man.
Otherwise, okay, why aren't you starting this project, what's the holdup? And then start having those conversations of, do we need to reallocate? That money.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Or close it out.
Part of the money is, if you look at this, there's a few items in there for study. One of the commitments CIPC had made and we kind of passed that along in our report. Was that we should not allocate any money for a study unless we're going to allocate money to the project. If we think the project, you know, just generally speaking, without putting fifty thousand or thirty out there to study a project, and who's gonna do it and why?
Right.
So if the project's gonna be uh three million dollars for a building. If we don't go through with the building, why do we wanna go through with the study?
Right.
If the town is not certain, this is how we wanna spend our money. You know, it can be ballpark and that, and we don't have to actually make an article, but it has to be presented to the town that that's one of the projects.
I agree with it, but.
That's the way we see.
But some projects, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, Austin, you, some projects you can't even start without a study, right? You gotta, you gotta trapped.
Right, and I think we've.
No, no, what I'm saying, if we think, just from talking to people, like a DT, Joe says, you know, man, that building or building committee. Uh, that uh building, that building's gonna cost probably five million. Well, does the town have five million dollars to do it? And if it has it in ten years, then we gotta know that, if it has it now, great, if it doesn't, why are we gonna spend thirty thousand dollars and then five years later, we're not gonna do anything? We've already spent the thirty thousand, that's our concern, that's what we see in the CIPC.
Right, yeah.
We don't wanna go there, right?
Well, and, and I think just for the public who's listening, the flip side of that is in the recent past, we've gotten quotes for projects. That have come in and then we've gone out to get the work actually done and the quote was nowhere near enough to cover the work that was, that was committed to be done. Because the, the quote might have come in and said it's gonna be thirty thousand and then they, we get the, the projects specked out and everything. And it comes in that it's gonna be fifty-five or sixty or more. Um, and so I think the town has to be careful, if the town is getting quotes, that they're legitimate quotes.
Right.
And not just the.
But isn't that legal? Wouldn't that be legal's responsibility? Aren't they the ones that?
Um, no, so, um, we're going right into one of my goals, Leah. Um, so, um, one of my goals is professional development and I think professional development is critical for all working professionals, but especially in the town government. Continuing our education, training for us to make sure that we're up to date with our skills and industry trends. I've had several staff members express interest in obtaining or beginning the process of obtaining their MCPPO. As, as to certify public procurement and physical. That's the certification you need to continue your all the while and reasons for procurement. So that's building projects, procuring paper, everything from five hundred dollars all the way up to five million dollars or more than that. Um, so, you know, one of my goals is, is to uh start sending people and getting people involved in, in that program. Um, there's obviously costs associated with that, but you know, my goal is to establish at least some sort of a professional development budget or line item for staff members. And obviously it's on a case by case basis because there's limited funds. Um, but at least to get that uh process moving, so in the case of going out the bid and maybe we're not soliciting the right price quotes and such. Not accounting for prevailing wage and everything else, when we have more people that are certified and, and aware of, of, of public procurement. That makes these processes a lot smoother and more informed, so when we go to capital planning, when we go to select board, when we go to town meeting. We have a pretty good estimate of what this is gonna cost for the community.
And in my head, to Jen's point about kind of governance and structure, it helps create a little bit of a stronger, stronger professional sense of, of government. And I think as the town is very quickly, I, I say this all the time, right, the town's very quickly approaching ten thousand. We, we need, in my opinion, need to professionalize and providing that professional development for um our staff, department heads. Um, and even key committee members or, or whatever, um, depending on their, on the role is, in, in my mind, that invaluable.
The, the thing I see with professional development is that it gives the employee a path forward. So if, if their skill set says, well, I wanna move into that department, I have what I need. And not so much a question of the pay increase, I think, but it gives them a path forward in the town. Cause in the past, people who have skills were shut out of that path, the path of, future path, and that irritates me. So if one of the return on investments, when we're investing in people or town stuff, is giving them an opportunity to help the town do better. Getting our investment back, then absolutely.
So I don't know if, um. You had a chance to look at the, the list that Austin had sent around kind of from, from the TA office as well as with um. Conversations with staff, um, department heads and staff. Um, there were a few things that kind of came out of it, um, professional develop was, development was one. Um, to Jen's kind of point throughout is the modernizing town government. Um, we have, this was one of the articles that kind of contained political, we have the twenty thousand dollars allocated for a town charter. Um, that I personally was a big proponent of years ago in talking with um. Community Paradigm when we did it the first search and then talking to TA candidates and even at the MMA and everything. Um, look, a lot of town administrators will look for communities that have a minimum of bylaw. And especially at, at a, a town rising to the size, a charter, which kind of just formalizes that role and position. And takes it a little bit less, the, the political pressure off a little bit more and allows them to govern town as legally should be governed versus politically.
Can I just, this is my inexperience here, is there a quick, like, two minute, what is the purpose of a charter, how does? What, what, what's the ten thousand cutoff for that, what's?
So.
What is it accomplishing?
Oh, that's awesome, but for, for me, it, the ten thousand is not mandatory, it, in my head, it's, I, maybe it is, but I don't think it is. I think just generally as a town hits ten thousand, you lose that small town status. And so you lose funding and um programmings that are open to what are considered small towns, towns that are sub ten thousand. Um, and so, but you're also not a large town or a city, so you're in this very murky area. Um, it also triggers, like the library has a lot more staffing and hours requirements, there's certain, um. I'm not sure if town, if town clerk has something, treasurer collector, I think that there's some other formal pieces of town government. That need to be increased or we may meet them already with what we have, but if we're not there yet, um, once you hit ten thousand, you have to increase certain services.
So what's, what's the benefit of a charter?
So, so I think what um we had mentioned is, is certainly with respect to the, kind of the population requirements and some kinda. This is the wrong industry, but mandatory minimums, if you will, for, for some service levels. Uh, but a charter, uh, you know, if you think about the United States Constitution or the state constitution, that kind of sets the overall structure of. State and federal government. Um, and, um, while those are certainly not perfect, at least that's sort of a, an overall um structure for. Governance of town meeting, governance of the executive body, town staff as well. Um, but it also kind of um spells out some of the other responsibilities and, and clearly defines. What exactly are the roles of the responsibilities and roles of the select board, who do they appoint? Uh, what is the responsibility of the finance committee, other boards and commissions as well? Um, so it's a, I guess to, to simplify it, it's like your, your local constitution. Um, and with that, obviously, um, those can be changed.
Yeah.
You go to town meeting and, you know, there's, there's charter changes as well, but at least it kind of sets forth then overall, what is the town of Rutland governance structure look like? Um, and there's, you can, I've seen some really great charters and I've seen some really not so great charters. Um, so, uh, I think really what the, what the goal I think that I've requested is to at least begin the process.
Yeah.
Of considering a charter, whether that's establishing a committee or working with a consultant to inform the community on, on this process. Um, there's money allocated for it. Um, I think it was, what was it, a couple of years ago that was allocated for the charter?
I think it was twenty nineteen, that was right before COVID, so it's been, yeah.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Does it have to be approved at town meeting?
So there's, so there's a couple of different ways that it can happen, I, this is, I'm recalling off a meeting that we had with Collins Center has come in a few times. Because they were the ones that we were um in conversation with to help guide us the process. So I think the process that the, the board was at the time leaning towards is that it is approved at town meeting, so a committee is formed. They work with um the, the um consultant. And then develop some, uh, a charter that then is approved at town meeting. Uh, I think there's another option that you can, um, I'm not sure if the charter committee ha- is, becomes elected and then you don't, it doesn't pass anything. It just, they make it and it becomes um the charter. Um, but it seemed like at the time, when everything was originally being talked about, was the path forward was to do a committee and then have it be presented at town meeting. And go that route, but I think that there is, I, I know that there is another way. Not sure if it's the committee beca- becomes an elected committee for that purpose. Or if the select board still appoints that committee, but there's some legal that it becomes, that they can submit it as a.
The most, the most common venue and process is going to town meeting. Um, and then, you know, most town meeting actions, most if not all town meeting actions, also, some of them have to go to a ballot, obviously with like a debt exclusion or an override.
Mm-hmm.
Um, others like the bylaws, for example, have to be ultimately approved by the state, as we are incorporated by the state. Um, and everything that we do ends up being approved if, or not approved by, by the common, so.
Does a charter fundamentally change any of the structures of any of the boards or committees?
Do you have a particular one that you're asking about?
No, I'm just thinking.
Doesn't have to, I mean, I think.
You know, some, like, for example, if the board is elected, does the charter change their responsibilities to the town? Whether they're elected or appointed?
Sounds like that would never work.
No, so I think select boards are actually, I think that's rooted within general law and I think the expert in the other room might be able to. Provide additional information on that, but I believe select boards are rooted in general law.
Okay.
And, I know.
But any other board, I'm just thinking, if the charter kind of expands what we can get as a chartered town versus as a small town.
Yeah.
Cause that's fundamentally what I'm hearing that's changing in terms of what grants are available or what youth services we have.
I don't think that it necessarily changes what, I, Austin probably knows, but I don't think it necessarily changes what's available. It, uh, there's a lot of small towns that have charters, Hubbardston has a charter, um, a, a lot of small, small communities have charters. But I think there's, I've heard kind of the, the ten thousand, you have to have a charter, you don't ha-. My understanding is you don't have to have a charter at ten thousand, but the larger a community comes and the more you can kind of formalize how things, um. How government is run, then, then the less chaotic it becomes.
It's awesome, you're like, you're trying, you're trying to streamline, made the government more efficient, right, I mean, that's.
Well, just make some consistency, I mean, like, we're talking about allocating funds for this or that, like, one board did it just on, on this decision and, and this board completely different.
Right. Yeah.
You know, we need to have some consistent parameters across all the town government, not just for.
Right.
Finance for how things are run, so we don't have a lot of these political.
So that when there are political swings, which happen, that the projects that are ongoing are able to continue t- t- to be, to be completed.
Right. Right.
Because it's not fair to anybody that comes in mid-project on, on any side, like, it's not.
I agree, I mean, the town, at that time, the town voted for a project, this is what they wanted. There shouldn't be any reason why, unless something comes up and it goes back to town meeting, that that shouldn't be completed, so, yeah, I'm, it just sounds.
I, I think a trial is, go ahead, on.
I was just gonna say, I still think that, you know, okay, if the, if the population can see progress, can see results. You know, this is going to take, you know, some, take some serious positive steps in letting them know that, you know. This is what's going on in the town and, you know, you're a part of it. Um, you know, this is, this is one of the things that has been one of my pet peeves for a number of years, is the fact that. You know, people, people ask me, what's, what's this all about, what's that all about, so on and so forth, you know? And, you know, I've had about five people already asked me, you know, alright, so what's gonna happen with the traffic pattern here in the center of town? Okay, so that's a favorite, that's a favorite of a lot of people. So I mean, you know, these are the things that I need to, need to be addressed if the people can see. And I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole raft of things there that, that should be looked at and, and put out for, uh, for review.
I, when it comes to the charter, that's gonna be a very, something I think we need to consider, how do we convey that to the public? Many people are gonna say, we're running fine the way we are, we don't need a charter. Some people are gonna say, well, is this more government control over me? Some people are gonna say, it's a good thing because now the town is growing, it's, but we need better stuff. So how we send that out to the town is gonna be critical. Cause we're gonna get a lot of questions, when it's done, we are gonna get a lot of questions at that town hall meeting, I guarantee.
Exactly, right, yeah. Essentially like a campaign.
You know, how the people are gonna see it, what they're gonna understand about it is, is what's gonna make a difference with them.
Right.
Well, we can do it, we did it for the override, I mean, that's never been done before, as far as I know, you know better than I. As far as a push campaign, informational push, that was pretty good.
No, you know, it's, it's one of these things that, you know, okay, the things I've seen over the years. Um, it's just one of these things that, okay, people will say, okay, we want for an override, they want for an override. And then everything disappears, they don't see any results of anything, okay? And this is, this is why lately, you know, having overrides in this town has been really an exercise in futility as far as the town is concerned.
Sure.
Well, and I think some of the frustration that I hear is that we kind of often feel like we're in a hamster wheel, right? And that we're seeing the same issues over and over and over again, and so I think if we can work to modernize government and.
Yep.
And empower the people to do their jobs within their job description, that then that takes out some of that hamster wheel stuff. Because that's, that leaves us to do the political and the policy side, but we're not, but, but the department heads and staff are, are doing the work of the projects that need to happen.
People wanna see results, they're not paying attention to all the noise in between, that's our job, they wanna see results, they wanna see things done.
Right, right.
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 You know?
What it's like for you, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So one last question on that, as far as talking about a committee that would put this charter together with a, a consultant, somebody that, whoever. What, who, is that up to us to decide who that committee is?
So I think.
Or is that us that would be?
So I think, in, I, when it was presented to us originally, the select board was the appointing authority. And there are sometimes recommendations as to the, the mix of who's on that committee, but it's not the select boards. The select board's not doing that work, there may be a representative from the select board or there may not be. Um, and I think the big thing is, um, Austin, correct me, is really getting community input. And so you really want kind of those at-large members, members who aren't, aren't in all of your other boards and commissions. And, and in, in government as much. Um, and the money is allocated to work with a, a firm to help kind of drive that. Um, I think one of the ones that, the one we have been talking to previously and the one that has worked with a lot of the surrounding communities is the Collins Center. Um, and there's a few other firms, I'm sure, Austin. Um, but they kind of have a system as to the timeline and how, how it's structured. And how to get the information out and hold the public forums and, um, and everything.
There was talk of a charter committee some years ago and it never really got off the ground, okay, so, you know.
More changed and there was no interest.
Wow, people were.
Pe- people were interested in it back then and they were interested in it from what I remember, simply for the fact that, okay. simply for the fact that, okay, they weren't informed as to what the town was doing, okay? So in other words, you know, and at that point in time, school budgets weren't what they are today, but nevertheless, you know, they were still looking at okay, why are we spending money on this, that, and the other thing? Because nobody explained it to them.
And to go along with modernizing town government, I think, Harry, you brought this up also, is, is working on the bylaws and really kind of we know the bylaw subcommittee, the ad hoc bylaw subcommittee has done a lot to, to bring the bylaws up. Um, and I think that we can do both and, it doesn't have to be an either or, but I one hundred percent agree because I think, my understanding is, town government has to follow MGL. If there's bylaws in existence, then you follow your local bylaws as long as it doesn't counteract MGL. But you have, you have power under MGL to make bylaws that are, are, are more specific beneficial directive to your specifics locality, municipality. So there is a lot of value to the bylaws, it's not we're gonna do a charter and throw away bylaws, we still need bylaws just as much as we need, it's, it's a both and, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think Justin, you brought up the fact that we only have thirty-five bylaws. And if we're going to a charter, do we need more? Is there a one or two bylaws out there that are missing in terms of helping this town, or do we need less bylaws? Cause now we have a charter. So I think there are ver- I, I always whenever anything happened to me in this town or something, I'd always go to the bylaws. Was it followed? You know, did they do the right thing according to the bylaw? And talking with you, that's one step, but the other step is policy. That's something we can have a big impact on. For, and I'm not just looking at our, now, I'm looking at five years, ten years, fifteen years from now. That we have established a precedent that makes it easier for them to do their job going forward. Everybody, so, uh, I think policies and bylaws though too, if we can get those two squared away and then do the charter or maybe the charter and work those two, I think that's a very positive thing in this town. And if we can communicate that to the people that we are actually changing the structure to help it better for the town, that's a win-win.
To be more efficient and, and cohesive, I think, I mean, I don't.
Right, I mean, no bylaw can change hiring practices. No bylaw can change firing practices. That's policy if I'm not mistaken, right?
Well, uh, so there's actually some towns that have a personnel bylaw that creates, you know, um, for example, creates a personnel board that establishes hiring procedures and policies associated with that. But that's essentially delegating the authority to, through statute or through local bylaw for that.
Okay, but that can be done, but probably the most efficient way is by policy.
Yup.
Yeah.
And I think as we develop policy and review policy, we need to be better about following policy every time or acknowledging that policy exists every time. I, I, there's always a ti- there's a ti- there's always the potential for, uh, an exclusion in that policy, but at least have the conversation is this is what the policy says, this is what we're doing. Or we're not doing because A, B, C. Um, and so I don't think, not this, not this board in particular, but boards, it historically, us also have not necessarily been the best at following existing policy or realizing that policy exists and may need to be updated because times have changed or, or whatever.
Well, seemingly it would be up to that board to, um, go with the policy as, as predicated to them. In other words, okay, so you've got this responsibility, it's your responsibility to oversee this.
Right, but, uh, a lot of, the select board is responsible for, for creating, developing, creating policy and we have a lot of policy, not a lot, we have a few policies that we should be following and we sometimes pick and choose when we follow them. And I don't necessarily even know that it's intentional pick and choosing when we follow, it's just we didn't think of it. And, I mean, even to the point tonight about CIPC and everything, like, what what goes and what doesn't go a- and everything. So, and that's bylaw specific versus policy, but it's.
That's also, that's why I kind of brought up the whole financial policies thing, cause I'm like, what?
Right.
What, what is the, how do we do this? What is this money used for? What can it be used for? What's the process? What does it have to go through CIPC? When does it, especially with the schools being in a regional district? What's the, the way that we get money to fix the schools if we need to? Does that come through the town? Does it have to go through the district? It just, our, our financial policies are not clear to me.
Right.
I mean, I realize that there's gonna be a certain amount of.
Indubitably.
Just associated with it, but even to me and, and just looking at other towns, our, ours do not seem complete at all. There's a lot that's left out that could be.
Yeah.
So I think for, for bylaws and policy both, it's review and, um, edit and create, right? I mean, all of them are, and it's not necessarily that we're going to be doing all of them all at once, but um, we know the ad hoc bylaw subcommittee has a lot that we need to review. Um, we may have edits and comments and then, um, if we have suggestions for additional bylaws or, or boards and commissions do. But policies, I think, really need to be edited and reviewed and edited and then I think there's a.
If I, if I might make a suggestion on the bylaws, um, I would like to see, like for me, I'm sitting on CIPC. I think it would be right for the town if we didn't CIPC first, don't do it last. Because my bylaw should be looked at, scrutinized, and then said, okay, this is the way to go. If there's anybody else that's sitting on a committee that needs to, I think we should look to ourselves first to take care of those bylaws for the town. This is, oh, they're cleaning their own house. Now that's just going after anybody else first. So that's just a suggestion I would have.
So I think, um, at your meeting on Monday, uh, Peter will be attending to, uh, have a conversation with the board to kind of set a path and at least first set some dates, uh, to talk about bylaws. So that, I think would be a good conversation where you can have that dialogue about, you know, where do you wanna start? Uh, obviously they have their proposed set of bylaws that they've spent a lot of time working on, so.
I've been trying to attend the bylaw committees as much as I can. Um, I think they're doing a great job.
Right in the middle of my workday.
Huh?
Right in the middle of my workday.
I know, I'm looking at the time and going, oh my god, I gotta give up my yard to get there, you know, but, but yeah, uh, they're doing a great job and uh, fine tuning a lot of things and I'm learning a lot. I, I mean, I didn't realize that the board had the right to set dog, dog collar rates and all that other stuff, you know, and fines. So that was just a suggestion to kind of show that we are gonna be transparent first, I guess.
And I guess part of my comment is, I, I wanna personally be careful that we're not looking like a board that's only taking care of ourselves, that we're looking at a board that is, that is, what's the priority? What's gonna kind of help the most of town and if that's general government first or maybe it is CIPC or maybe it is cable or, or, or whatever, but I, I wanna be careful that we're not.
Again, regardless of which ones we pick, let's get them done.
Right, exactly.
That's it.
Right.
Let's get them done. Pick two or three or whatever it is, get them done.
And keep moving on.
People can, right, and then we, you know, and I feel like in years past, it's the same conversation that's come up. And nothing gets done.
Yup.
Just arguments.
Yup.
Let's pick two or three, regardless of what they are, whatever the bylaw committee feels is important or we or whatever, and just get them done, yeah.
Over the years, I've had the opportunity to go into and out of a lot of meetings and stand behind the camera. And I think that one of the, one of the things that I've learned mostly and is gonna come from CIPC because I think that they have a fairly well organized way of doing things and it really does show when you see the end result. And I hope you won't hold that against me, but.
Well, but I think just in, in, for any of those policies or bylaws, I, from my perspective, I would say anything that's general town government or financially involved, especially in this town, kind of takes priority.
Right.
Yup. Okay, just, also, it's just, I'm, uh, cleaning out my office. And, um, there's a lot of stuff in there. And I did come across a very thick binder that says policies and procedure, my gosh, this is great. Uh, compared what was in that very thick binder to what's on the website. And I think, so maybe review, edit, create and publish.
Yeah.
Uh, as a part of the whole transparency thing too, cause I think there's actually an, and, you know, Tamika, uh, with an respectful view of the evidence on Monday came across a, a policy that was created a couple of years ago that I don't think is online, so for.
Was it something that we're adhering to or we forgot about?
Uh, yeah, yes.
But to my point, I had to go to Tamika who had to go to Becky for the financial policies, they're not any place on the website.
Um, and yeah, and even in my own research, when I was, you know, trying to get this job, um, it was, you know, unclear to me what exactly we had in place. Um, you know, the job advertisement actually had more information than the town website, which was kind of interesting, so, um.
And I think that leads us into one of our next kind of goals is in identifying efficiencies through technology. I mean, that's kind of more broadly, but, um, I know Austin's been doing a lot on the website side and to, to modernize that and, and get things there, um, and tr- and train people to go there for information, that that's, that's the key. Um, I think the office has been really good about getting stuff on the digital side that serves a, a, a specific group of people but that's a, a key group of people that may not be going to the, the website all the time or whatever. Um, and then there's a lot of other technology things, I think, that there might be an investment in time especially and also maybe money to bring it in and learn it, but once it's in place, it streams, streamlines processes, reduces human error and just makes, makes a lot of government job more efficient without errors, so.
Can I ask, do we have, um, I'm trying to remember, in the library or any place in town, do we have any computers set up for people that may not have access to them? To go in?
Mm-hmm.
So the library has computers here. Um, I don't, there's been talk about having one at the building on Glenwood, but I don't know that there's any over there for, um, like council on aging, for council on aging.
You'd think that that would be a place that would really benefit from having.
And I know that there's one in the annex that I think is really for the viewpoint. I was like, who's on Zoom? I think that there's one in the annex for viewpoint for people that need to come in to do the online permitting. But it's been one of those conversation pieces that really there should be one in town hall and one in the annex that has access to more than just a single, single piece, um, council on aging, the library, and that they're, they're advertised.
Yeah.
For that purpose.
Okay.
So, um, i- is that okay to contin- you know, some of these goals I think are, um, going to be more goal specific for Austin which we have to create goals for Austin also to, to be able to evaluate him. Um, but also for us to oversee, you know, like, this, we would really be in charge of the policy and reviewing the bylaws and if we just de- decide to go the charter route, kind of setting that, that committee and working with whatever firm we work with. Um, but some of the other pieces, uh, for my mind, the long-term financial planning would be more Austin's wheelhouse um, as a priority and kind of monitoring the override budget and financial, we would take care of looking at the financial policies and everything, but um, it's gonna be kind of both and, I think. Does that?
Yup.
Makes sense to?
Yup.
So we can keep going through, um.
Honestly, on efficiencies and through technology, I'm gonna leave that to you.
Yeah.
I have no clue how that's gonna, you know, that's not my wheelhouse, so, you know, you bring it to us, we'll look at it.
So this is actually an interesting little side story that I, from even this, on the school district side, on Monchee City side. They do, they were doing so much paper, like, all of their payroll and time off and everything was still paper. So the opportunity for human error is so great. And most of the, the softwares that municipalities and district, school districts use have built in the capabilities to manage all of that online. There's a training piece to it and it takes t- a, an investment of time for whomever is doing it to learn it. But then it's so much, it's automatic almost, so there's no missed payrolls or there's less likelihood of missed payrolls or, um, misallocating time off or, or whatever. So I think some of that is, is stuff that Austin's working on.
And some of this, I think, so some of these goals, I think, will be directly to, so, one of the ways I also view this goal-setting process is, is also kind of sets a path forward for myself and town departments to formulate the next year's budget. So identifying deficiencies through technology, the board supports that as a goal. Ideally, that means that we allocate some resources in next year's budget to be able to accomplish that goal, for example, right? So increasing our purchase services line for.
Whatever software.
To be able to acquire software. Um, you know, I think the previous board was presented, um, some technologies to improve our budget process, things like that, so. Um, and I also think, and as like we have, we're paying for services right now that we're just not utilizing to the full potential. Um, so, uh, would support, I think, maximizing some of those resources that we have. Um, you know, I think on, especially on the human resources front, there's a lot of improvement there that we can take advantage of. Thankfully, we'll have some staff that will be able to carry that out as well. Um, but even, you know, just, I think, the most important policy document that U5 approve and, and submit to town meeting is the budget. Um, so if we can tie in some of these goals with budget requests, that would be, I think, ideal.
And I would argue even professional development, because some of that might be professional development for the staff that it, that is, that is utilizing that.
Yup.
Um, so when you had made the comment about the school district and everything else, do you, does that include like, um, you know, when we get our property tax documents or, you know, like the online system that we have? Like, I try and go online to pay my excise tax or whatever I need to, like, we need to send out all that paper stuff or is there a system that we can just say if you need it, here it is, or sign up for, go green, you can sign up and have an electronic statement versus having something mailed to you or it, is that all like?
I think, I, actually, I think paper bills or some of that is mandated in general law.
Okay.
Um, you know, because I think, well, I think of like my grandparents, for example.
Shred it.
They would never sign up for email to get their tax bill. My, my, my grandparents would never sign up. Um, but there's something, you know, inherently, especially, you know, when you get that, uh, that tax bill, it hurts, I know. Um, but it's some sort of a, a reminder to do that and then the required notices. So I think that there's, you know, master general law is certainly not perfect, there's a lot of antiquated processes that are involved in general law that unfortunately still have to follow.
Why?
I think there are ways that we can, um, through technology, and we already have some of it, like our online, online bill pay system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure if right now you can pay your property tax bill online, but is that a way that we, we can do that, you know?
I like stopping up at the clerk's office.
You do? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I love doing that.
It feels nice, right? Yeah, yeah.
Some years ago, my wife was breached, okay, and this turned out to be quite a big deal, all right? And so after things were done and said, the attorney told us, you know, don't do what you would think online is safe to do because there's a much greater chance of things happening. Well, I understand that today's security is better and so on and so forth. But I still have this question in my mind about it, okay? So in other words, you know, some of these things don't go away in our way.
I'll tell my husband that, my husband is very, it, it took me forever just to get him to pay some of his bills online.
Did you ever see the, you know, like, oh, on social media or anything, the IRS called me?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm.
How often does the IRS call you if ever, right? They'll send you a letter?
Yeah, same with law enforcement. Number one rule is a cop is never gonna call and ask you for money.
Yup.
All these charity groups, it, no, 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 it's not gonna happen that way.
Yeah, but, you know, I think, so for example, we, uh, just, um, we just sent out the information to all employees and retirees with respect to open enrollment and health insurance. There's ways that we can automate, automate that. Obviously, there's still some, um, some staff that may they'll still wanna get their check mailed or get their health insurance opt-in or opt-out information mailed, but if there's ways that we can um, you know, save some money or identify efficiencies through technology there, I think that there's resources that we could possibly take advantage of.
I was surprised that, um, it wasn't, that the town doesn't operate, uh, that it's mandatory direct deposit. I was surprised by that, cause most employ- employers now are mandatory direct deposit. Um, and so that's another piece that a lot have direct deposit, but some don't. And that's an administrative piece to keep track of who's getting what and what. and that's an administrative piece to keep track of who's getting what and what's getting sent out.
Can I also, just one more thing on technology, so I think there's things like public records request. So there are opportunities out there to publish most, if not all, of our records automatically. So if you think about some, not all, but some public records, especially on like the public safety side, take a lot of staff time to review. If there's ways that we can automate and publish a lot of these records and just refer people to the online portal that I think is, reduces an administrative burden on the staff and just overall, you think about transparency. Town of Hubbardson just, you know, published a new public information portal and most, if not all, town departments, whether it is property records, whether it is tax bills, financial reports, they're posted automatically online. So you just go right to the website and get virtually everything you can.
You know, that's, because I was just looking up assessments and the assessments haven't been updated till last fiscal year, they have posted us twenty-one. So just anything that can help keep things updated.
Some of this, some assessments for your property go back ten years that haven't been updated, so.
So we have a full-time assessor now who's.
She's on there, I've seen her.
No, she's starting to do that, but when we get into the financial planning piece, this was one thing that we've got a homes coming online, we got senior housing coming online for another eight hundred thousand a year. We're gonna have efficiencies and more money for the upgrades in the tax value of your property. So if we had looked ahead at that, would we still have passed two and a half? That's my question, because we never had access to that information. So one of the citizens came to me and said, you know, I'm looking at this list, why did we pass two and a half if we had all this money coming in, in the future that we could plan for? I said, well, we needed it now, you know, but still, that's what I'm hoping in the financial planning process, we balance the income and the expenses because we know what we have coming in.
Well, yeah, I think that there's expenses with more money coming in, but there's going to be a greater need for some services also. And I think in the past, when there were, you know, decades ago, when there was large home growth, we saw all this new growth money realized and spent it all and didn't plan it all.
You're right, you're absolutely.
The gate was open, as somebody earlier said.
Exactly, and so we know at some point the new growth money is gonna stop because we're gonna be built out and we're not going to be getting that. And then it's going to be the annual taxes. Yes, with more houses and more entities, we're getting more taxes, but there's a greater need of the resources. And it might not only be schools, it might be public safety, uh, council on aging, DPW, there's more roads, there's more sidewalks, there's more infrastructure, so.
Yeah, I think every town's gonna face that, how are we gonna deal with it?
Right. Um, a couple of other things on kind of Austin's list from the office as well as his conversations with staff. I think this is a really big and important one is staff morale. I have been saying for years that I think Rutland's biggest asset are our employees and we expect a lot of our employees and we get a lot from our employees and oftentimes they, I don't necessarily know that they feel appreciated or valued or seen for what, for everything that they're doing. And their job descriptions have changed, in most cases, very significantly from when they were hired and not realized any sort of title change, compensation change or anything. So in some cases, so.
Number one, I apologize for pointing, but that's the biggest step right there. People, a lot of the departments didn't trust the people that were running the town, didn't have faith that they could, they were being heard or I think you're the number one, you're the starting, because it starts at the top. I mean, if people don't respect or trust, more trust their supervisors, then that's gonna cause morale, it's gonna trickle down. So I think, you know, hiring Austin's a huge step and I know the public safety bill, they've made a lot of moves that I think has been very positive, from what I've heard. I'm not in the building anymore, but from what I've heard, some moves have been made, you know, dispatch and police and fire and things are starting to get better over there, but at least somebody's listening. That's my, I guess, my rant to the, that's. I think a lot of people in town feel like the person in charge of the town now is listening and more competent than in years past.
Willing to do.
Without sounding like I'm picking on anybody, but that's.
No, I also think that we need to somehow get our citizens to acknowledge that we have great people. I'll tell you what I do, I started this years ago and as, when time comes, let's say it's Christmas or it's July, whatever, I'll buy a twenty-dollar gift card for Dunkin's and I'll give it to each of the departments. Here, use it for your people, just enjoy, don't tell them it came from me, I don't care. Just let your people, so it looks like somebody in the town cares about what they do. That's all, I wish we could get, you don't have to buy a card, but just give more kudos to these people who do a great job. You know, you're driving down the highway and there's the DPW crew fixing a road, you know? Hey, guys, nice, good job. I mean, if we val, and we say we have great people, we value them, somehow we gotta get our citizens to understand how good they are.
Yeah, I think this goes beyond just the Moses Power Award. In other words, you know, we've got to think of something to do on individual, on an individual basis and more often.
I think it's something that has, I guess, irked me a little bit in this town is I know, like to Randy's point, he was bringing it up earlier, you know, we throw a great Fourth of July party, we did, we spent a lot of extra money for the tricentennial, but to me, the townspeople seem more interested in, say it, I apologize if it comes off negatively, in a lot of the fireworks, the party planning, than the town itself. It's, how do we get townspeople more involved in the actual town versus just the festivities, if you will?
That you need to roll, though, that's just, that's the country.
We have a unique chance, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that goes back to what Stephen you made a little while ago about people wanting to know what's going on within the town, okay?
Like, how do we get more interest in, like, people just joining committees in town that are not the Fourth of July or the tricentennial, that somebody's gotta be responsible for it.
If you show up, you show up, if you don't, but at least it shows, you see people out there, citizens getting involved. Not that we can do that, but that's just.
So a couple items on that, so, I think citizen engagement is something that is a goal of every community. I think it's obviously over the past probably few decades, it's gone down tremendously. There's been some communities, and actually the library director was the one who recommended this, I think it's an excellent idea, establishing a kind of like a citizens boot camp or a citizens academy and it's, you know, a lot of police departments do it, where it's, you know, just for example, it's like a six-week program in town departments every Thursday night and it's, you know, it's police and fire on one Thursday, treasurer collector, town clerks on another Thursday, they essentially, they sit down, it's a group of residents, they talk about their departments and, you know, informs them, allows for a dialogue to happen about the departments. Marblehead, I think, is one example where they've done that and I think they've had several years now doing it, it's very successful. I think that would be one initiative that could be a great way to kind of inform the people about, you know, the workings of their local government and maybe get them a little bit deeper understanding of it. Also, you can even think about, my generation is probably the worst civically involved, an opportunity to engage the youth, I know the library has kind of a teen advisory group and they do a lot of non-civic related activities, I think, more cultural and social, but I think there's an opportunity there to engage youth population.
I like that idea because there's a lot in this town, you know, the rec department, you know, facilities that we'd like to be able to have for the youth that if they had a say, can we give them a forum to bring their thoughts forward?
They're the future, sounds corny, but they're the future leaders, right? So if we don't get them engaged now, then they probably won't be twenty years from now.
And I think, you know, it also human, so having that program, it humanizes the town departments a little bit, puts a face to the name, instead of, you know, just seeing Rebecca Tittle on your tax bill, you actually see who Becky is. And so, you know, so that's one idea, I think that was a great idea from the library director. I also am hoping to do a little, you know, I'm hoping to do a little bit more of this. I've tried to do it already on some of our social media and even some of my town administrator updates is highlighting some of the employees' work, positive impact. So doing a lot more of that and just recognizing, getting people, putting a face to the name as well, but just recognizing a lot of the good work that happens every day. And then also something that I'm kind of piloting this year, so we're doing a, like an employee appreciation day. I think they're closing down the town pool and town staff are able to participate, but I'd like to expand that and make it just an overall employee appreciation day and allow for town staff to nominate each other for kind of an employee of the year award in recognition of their service for the year. I think having that at the select board level and establishing recognition from the select board level kind of also just legitimizes what I'm hoping to do at the staff level. So if we have, you know, the select board kind of participating in that process, I think that that would really do a lot for the staff morale as well. Just, you know, letting them know that the select board is paying attention, is appreciative of their work and the impact that they have.
There was a period in time after the helmet law went in for bike riders that the police department would be standing out there giving out ice cream certificates to the kids who rode by that had a helmet on. So I mean, you know, yeah, it was just a small recognition, but nevertheless, you know, they got the police department out there, they got, you know, showing that they cared about what was going on as well.
I think some of the other considerations is allowing a little bit flexible work schedules or the opportunity to have a day off or, you know, a mental health day or something. I know a lot of companies and colleges and everything are either doing a mental health day once a quarter or whatever, where you either do a team building activity or something, but it's not work focused. The other option is looking towards like volunteer hours or something that if you wanna do community service volunteering. But I think Austin has highlighted some good ideas as far as how to, to kind of promote that work-life balance and whole person.
Yeah, I would say doing something like that, like I completely agree with, you know, the employee of the year and, you know, anything that we can do to highlight their positive impact, but coming from a company that financially doesn't necessarily reward its staff based on their performance or it's just the way the company runs. However much money the company makes is how much they allocate, it doesn't necessarily mean. You could be doing a great job, but you're only gonna get so much. So again, coming from a town that maybe has some financial constraints, if there's some things that could be done outside of just acknowledging job well-done, flex hours, like my company is piloting a summer Fridays program, so I work four ten-hour days every other week and I get every other Friday off. You know, is there something a little bit more than just, you know, the pat on the back that we could do for?
And I think it should be good, but to me, being a financial guy, I look at the financial impact. If we're giving somebody a day off and we're still paying him for it, that's, may not sit well with the town. So how do we, how do we, I think the idea's good, I just don't know how we structure it if we're, and I think of the union contracts for one. How do we give union contracts and say, okay, we're gonna give you a day off for a mental day without all of a sudden becoming a contractual issue? That's my concern in how we implement this thing. And it doesn't cost the town any more money or loss of services to the public.
And I think, I mean, I think with hopefully an HR firm or piece coming on to offer some guidance, that there's some creative ways in looking at what other towns offer their staff, because I think currently the offices are closed to the public on Fridays, but often, most of the time, staff is still here working, they're doing work. So can something be reevaluated that hours are adjusted so that they're, they're have hours or don't have hours or whatever? I think that there's, there is some leniency there to work around that.
I'm not saying it's not feasible considering how much we increase their pay every year, which isn't a lot considering everybody else's. It is a nice way to do something, I'm just cautious of how we implement this thing that doesn't catch us in the rye.
But even like the flex scheduling, like is there flexibility in what their hours are? Because even for townspeople, a lot of us work nine-to-five jobs and we can't get to a town building, if necessary, before it closes for the day. So maybe one day a week, one day a month, it's open later. You know, that person comes in later in the morning and works till seven o'clock that night or something. And just, is there some way that we can accommodate, you know, other?
I think before COVID, there were a couple of days a week that the town hall was open a little bit later. I want to, maybe until seven or something. And then when COVID hit, I think everything went crazy and I don't know that it's been reevaluated and now hopefully with a, with a stable town administrator in and some, hopefully some HR support or something that we can get something that works. Because I hear you, that we're not, that the townspeople aren't losing out, but there, that there's a balance to the town, what the town needs and what our.
Of course, every department is run so differently.
Right.
Right.
You know, the towns clerk is a very, it's open or it's not open. You have other departments that.
Maybe they're me not, or they're out.
Different locations, there are different times, they flex, so it's hard to just draw on a blanket, give everyone this day off, it just wouldn't work, you know?
You said the library gave you some ideas, is that something that we could, hey, give us, let's have a brainstorming session, what are some things that, let them say, what would you like to see? We're not saying you're gonna get it, but let's talk about some options that might be feasible.
This conversation about kind of the work-life, work and personal life balances, well, it's happening across all industries, but particularly at the municipal management levels, we're having a lot of these conversations, especially evaluating some of the policies that were implemented during the pandemic, right? So hybrid work schedules, completely remote, flex scheduling and that, some of the challenges or some of the concerns that you raised, what we're talking about as well. So some of the recommendations that have come is implementing within those policies kind of a consistent review, whether it's a quarterly or biannally review of these policies, obviously constant check-ins if it's between an employee and their supervisor to make sure that, you know, the work's still getting done. How effective is town government still? But also just evaluates as well, you know, some of the positions. For example, in a previous community acting, we had a treasurer collector clerk, and believe it or not, she was more efficient processing bills at home, right? So the night before, she would take the bills that need to be processed. Normally at work, it would take her because she's distracted, she's got people coming out the window. We'd take her all day, she got it done in like two hours. So I think just an evaluation and input from town departments and town staff about, you know, yeah, what works and what doesn't.
What works.
You know, I think, worst thing you can do is just implement a policy and then just step away.
Yeah.
Right? You have to constantly review these and make sure that, you know, we're still being effective. And if there are efficiencies that can be realized, I think that's a conversation that we should be having. But yeah, I mean, just some of the stuff that's come from the library, just one example, I mean, there's some really good ideas. Some of the departments are already, you know, so now that the library is on kind of a summer schedule, so they're no longer open on Saturdays, they're extending their hours on Fridays to be open a little bit later. In the TPW contract, it's not new, but it's something that, you know, they now have their summer hours, so they're ten-hour days and they're not working on Fridays, so we're doing a little bit of it. It's also not necessarily consistent across all the unions or all town staff, so that's another thing too, is consistency with some of the practices that we have.
We can also note, you know, it could be something, I'll call it, if it's applicable, tenure-related, if you've been here for X long, you can have this or if it's, it can be a privilege and it's gonna, like you said, it'll be evaluated. If we find that it's being taken advantage of, it can be called back or just anything to help, you know, keep some things, some sort of incentive, yeah?
Yeah, coming to your point, I think we're an exception though, but, well, we close on Fridays. Yeah, coming to your point, um I think we're an exception though, but well, we close on Fridays for the most part, right? I mean, there's people that are working on Fridays, but it's the hourly staff on here. So, you know, one of the things that I think was. A goal for a lot of the industries that implemented, for example, this flex schedule or the longer hours is, you know, if I need to go get. Have an appointment, I can go on Friday or I can have that flex day to be able to do that. Um we are a little different, but I'm sure that there's still some strain in in some of the way that we're doing things. So I think. Having that employee input and then talking about it and having a conversation about it. So I do think that the human resources. Process and operation will help greatly in a way that we often.
Um one thing to get back a little bit to citizen engagement, I think is. Setting the tones with boards and commissions that it's a a positive and that they are welcoming of new. New members. I think there's a a a lot of boards and commissions have been seated with the same individuals for a long time. And it's comfortable and easy to fall into that. Process of this is just how we do things and not be as welcoming of boards and commissions. Or there's a lot of negativity towards another board or commission or or select board or or staff or whatever. And so I think kind of trying to set that tone a little bit of welcoming new members is important also. I don't know if this group has any interest. We haven't done board, um appointed board and. Commission liaisons in a number of years. I I go kind of on both sides of them because I think there's a great value to them if. If there's a a targeted role for us, for a select board to be there. Previously, it was just kind of go, you were signed three or fi- three or four. Other boards and commissions and you were try, you should try to make a meeting once a quarter or something. Um and if there's no kind of structure as to what your role is there, then it becomes, were you here to babysit us or you like? Or we have all these projects and there are pet projects and you're gonna get them done for us. And and so I if. I I'm open to that conversation with this board if there's interest in that, but um how that would look and if there's. In attending the MMA, it seems like a number of communities do still do the liaisons even with a town administrator. So at one point the thought was we have a town administrator, we don't need to do this anymore because the town administrator is gonna gonna take care of it all. But the town administrator is one person and not able to make all of these meetings. So as a way to improve communication and also I don't, I.
Uh have you and Austin talked about this?
So I had mentioned it to Austin just briefly and said, you know, that it was a consideration that I wanted to bring forward and see how. How this board felt because I don't wanna have Austin spend a whole lot of time on it if if there's not. If this board isn't.
I mean, I think these boards are, they're all public meetings, right? So I think making anything a mandatory, you know, you show up every meet, I I don't know. I I I think it's more.
Well, and which which boards or committees, all of them or some in particular or?
In the past, the way it had been was, yeah, it was all the the select board appointed boards and commissions. So we're divided among five of us and everybody would get, I don't, three or five depending on how the numbers played out and how much. Everybody could commit. There's some meetings that, you know, ad hoc bylaw subcommittee meets in the middle of the day. Well, how many of us can can? Make that meeting. Some others meet at seven o'clock in the morning. How many of us can can make that? Like, so it it's not always easy and I don't know, I wanted to get input from this board. I think. Austin, you might have some input from how other, how actin' had done it or if you had experience in Wichita, but.
Yeah, so we we did, uh so I, we had liaisons of both communities. And most of the time it didn't necessarily require attendance. I mean, it was encouraged, especially as a liaison. Ideally, you wanna kind of get up to speed on the business, but mostly it was kind of the point of contact for the committee. So yes, oftentimes, you know, eventually goes through the town administrator, but sometimes. Uh the select board can also kind of help guide the committee in some of their business or inform the committee about what the select board is doing. And keeping them up to date on some of the things that may be relevant to the committee and their work as well. But, you know, if you need some help from from town staff, going through the town administrator to get that done is often the best case. So it really is is, it it can be either as hands-off or as hands-on in actin'. It was maybe it's just because it's the way the board was. They did attend mostly every meeting. But.
So they had no life.
But they also, I mean, a lot of the boards and committees, they, you know, they didn't, they didn't meet before, you know, four or five o'clock. You know, so they were generally accessible for the for the public as well. Um so the bylaw committee, for example, would be.
When we we did this in the CIPC, each member was assigned a certain committee or that. And we started out okay, but the commitment to continue that with everything. Started to fall apart. And my concern with that was we eventually dropped it was. How is the committee gonna view you if you start something and then don't follow through? How are they gonna feel about you? That's my concern. So if it's, if we decide to do it, it has to be a commitment to do it. You can't just show up once and then six months later show up again. You can give them your phone number, they can call you, but that's not the same. And in some way, I guess I agree with Tom, pop in when you wanna pop in, let them know that you're here. You're not gonna be at every meeting, but you'd like to attend as many as you can. That would be your commitment. So you're not there. All the time and giving up your own life, so to speak.
I think the liaisons were also helpful for the other board members because it would also allow, you know, Harry attending the bylaw committee. Hey, the bylaw committee, you know, at a board meeting, bylaw committee had a great discussion the other day about ex-bylea. So keeps the other board members informed, but obviously the general public that may also may not have access to some of these boards and commissions. So.
I guess I I have mixed feelings. I think it's good, but I have.
And that's kind of, I think, where I come from. I think it, there can be value to it, but I don't wanna do it haphazardly. And so. It seems like there's not strong, yes, let's do it. So we can kind of do how we have been. Like I often. Am on planning board or conservation, the remote meetings I tend to hop on in the evenings. Um if I'm doing other stuff and I'll and I'll listen as I'm doing stuff or I'll watch the Youtubes for the 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 meetings that are recorded. It's some of the other meetings that aren't recorded um that get to be, but.
I mean, I will tell you, I'm doing the ad hoc bylaw committee because eventually they're gonna come through us. And I wanna be able to add additional stuff that maybe Peter or somebody won't bring up. Or that got lost in the conversation that I'm aware of that I can add more to the board. And since I have the time and I'm retired, I can do it one o'clock or two o'clock in the week, okay? So for me, uh that's what I look at. It was kind of, if I invest my time, what's the return on that investment? Is it good for the board? Can I do it? So that was what I was looking at.
I have found that over the years I've been in public anyways, doing school concerts or doing. Various meetings in town, so on and so forth. So people kind of have an idea of who I am now. All of a sudden I find also that people come up to me at the pharmacy, at the post office, at the gas station. And so, you know, I wind up listening to them for some period of time and sometimes, you know, these these subjects that they have are. Um oh yeah, okay. So, you know, it's something that, you know, we gotta kind of think about paying attention to down the road, but you know, it's it's something that. Um when you are out in public and people have an idea of who you are. Um there's a good chance they're gonna stop and talk to you. I got a hug one day and I was like totally caught off guard by that.
That was me at the. I had a couple two milk booms.
And I think, I mean, to to your point, Paul, about kind of hearing a lot of different input from from either individuals or boards or commissions or or whomever. Um I think we're gonna try adding to the uh to the our normal select board agenda, opportunities for the the board as a whole to bring forward. Announcements or comments or anything. So if there's stuff that that should be on kind of the radar of everyone. That we're not gonna discuss and and go into detail and make decisions on then, but that's another opportunity. To say, hey, this is something that came up. Has anybody else experienced it or heard or, you know, in addition to. Future agenda items, but it's an opportunity to.
I mean, I went to the Concom meeting the other night, not because I have an interest in Concom. But because they oversee a lot of town land. And my curiosity was if we need soccer fields for little kids for that, not not the big, we're not building stadiums on them. If we need soccer. We got one for that. We, I know where that one's gonna go. But where, what can we do? How can we, what place is best? Where are they? If we wanna start engaging the community. How can we go about what's there? So from my perspective, I, when actins up, I just wanted a little more knowledge on what was there. And also what happened in the past? Did we try this? And, you know, I had a great discussion with Concom over, we we've done a lot. We've offered a lot of land to the town. And fortunately, the select board never went in there. Well, we're looking five or 10 years out for these kids. The town's gonna grow. We're gonna run out of land. And I come to find out they had a uh an individual who was willing to help do the land, clear it and make it so. And I'm going, we didn't take advantage of that? So that's the kind of stuff that I find intriguing to bring back to the board at some point if we're looking at expanding these things. Well, some way.
I know, I know, I know one of those anyways, yeah. I know what you're talking about, yes.
So it sounds like, sorry, we'll leave the boards and commission liaisons off and just kind of continue to do it informally and it's out there. It can always be brought back up for consideration. I'm not, but it, I don't hear a strong resounding, yes, let's do it. And I would like to have more than a meh, you know.
I I I do not see myself going around to the boards or the departments. I'm going around to the lesser thing, you know, like bylaws committee, like Concom, like agriculture. I wanna see what's going on with those.
Yeah, well, that's who we're talking about is the boards and commissions, those guys for sure, the ones that we appoint, not the elected because, I mean. I I often, and I'm plan- planning or Concom because I wanna know what's going on. So if somebody comes and asks me, I'm like, oh, well, that's in planning. Or or that's in Concom or whatever. Yeah.
It's gonna be worthwhile to consider, um call it like a summit meeting. Annually, biannually, get all those boards in at Glenwood, get them all together. Six months advance notice, get everybody together in one room.
Austin and I, yeah, we're just talking about doing like a retreat with boards and commissions, us and department heads, staff. Also because I think there's value really in in that um and hopefully coming out of this is some of this can go to boards and commissions. The ones that we appoint, the select board appoints because these are kind of. If if when we agree on these with Austin, they're the town's executive level. Board goals and objectives and the boards and commissions which we appoint. Often should help fulfill these these goals. And so we can hopefully have a better working relationship. With those boards and commissions um to to.
I I just think that's an interesting idea because, you know, we wanna, we have these these goals, but I feel like and and. You've done some work with trying to have joint meetings with some of these other commissions, but there's, it's more than just two sometimes. That are involved. So getting everybody in a room, so CIPC can comment on this or Concom can add their. Again, you've got all the people that know all the history, all the details. That can kind of share everything all at once versus a chain through this or going to this or that. So even. Even if it's something like, even annually, just once a year, I don't think that's a big commitment to get everybody in a single room and just.
I one hundred percent agree. So I mean, I think we've.
We wanna end up being adversaries for them, not conflictors. We're not there to show. Yeah, but we do wanna be able to help them as much as we can. Yeah, I feel, I have to move, we've talked about this in the past. I feel like the select boards of 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 years past have just been in the way sometimes. And I I don't, I never understood that.
I know what you're saying. I do, yeah.
Never made any sense to me. I just, you could, it was so obviously, they they were just.
Austin, I put it under citizen engagement, even though, just as another way to kind of. Um and then the other one I think that Austin brought up was investment in capital, facilities and equipment. And this, in my mind, kind of goes a little bit with the. Financial pla- the financial piece, um the transparency and accountability. I think we historically aren't good at. At knowing what we need um because we don't ever have the money to fund it and we. So we never know what we need. And we have been horrible about taking care of our buildings and there's conversation about expanding our buildings or adding new buildings. Or whatever, but we also have to have a plan and a commitment to take care of what what we have, I think. I mean.
I I hate to say it, but sitting on the CIPC, I, we've gotten the feeling over the past years. We get very, hardly anybody shows up at our meetings. I can understand why, but I mean, I get the feeling over the years. That people are afraid to look at the numbers because they don't have an answer for it. They don't wanna see this is five million five years from now. This is 10 million 10, because we don't have an answer for it. So why bother looking at it? And I think that it was a wrong approach. I think we really need to start looking long-term at what it's gonna be. Everyone just keeps pushing it, pushing it away, pushing it away. Before, you know, 20 years has gone by and we need an override.
There's mitigation there too. You know, so in other words, they, all they know is when the school budget comes in every year. That they're all sitting there getting slapped in the face because holy socks, you know, alright? Like when they announced that, you know, two and a half percent and you could go online and and put your tax number in and. Figure out how much it was gonna cost you. I looked at it and I said, oh yeah? Actually, that wasn't quite the words I used. Um but no, you know, it's that type of a thing. And I've had other people say the same thing to me, you know, and. And I represent the senior element because I am one. And so the seniors have been coming up to me pretty regularly to talk about this thing. Okay, so I have a serious understanding of where these people are, what they're thinking. Is and why they're thinking this way, okay? So in other words, if they wanted to say something like, okay, I'm gonna pay X number of dollars more. What am I seeing out of this? And so, you know, and there have been more than one person mentioned to me the fact that, okay. I raised my kids, I put them through school, I paid all the taxes. Now my kids are out on their own. They're married. I have grandchildren. Why do I still have to pay for school taxes? Alright? Now, my niece lives outside of Chicago, probably about the same distance from Worcester to Hubbardston, but at any rate. When she told me about this, I was kind of, I was kind of floored actually because in the beginning I saw, I, that was a terrible idea. But she said, okay. She said, everybody in town pays a basic tax, okay? Okay, so if you have kids in school, you pay it per capita. And I said, really? I don't think much of that idea, but the more I thought about it, the better it sounded really. And again, you know, and I'm looking at it from, okay, from a senior standpoint, but nevertheless, you know, okay, so. Alright, so you're paying five hundred dollars a year in taxes. And you've got two kids in school and you wind up paying another five hundred dollars for the two hundred fifty for each kid? You know, okay, so I mean, this is basically how it works out. I mean, you know, I, the the numbers are bogus, but nevertheless. So, you know.
I I think things are gonna get better for our town. I have a lot of hope for that because. Number one, we haven't developed a business the way we should have over the last 20 years. Two, we haven't done the proper appraisals over the years that would. Give people an understanding if they move in here, what the tax rate's really gonna be. We've almost kept it artificially low. Based on the assessed values. We've got Harmony Homes coming in. We've got the marijuana place coming in. So we have a lot of opportunities for revenue. And um can speak, and I looked at, I looked through the departments because I I'm a guy that likes. And, um, can speak, and I looked at, I looked through the departments, cuz I, I'm a guy that likes ROI, return on investment. If I look at the planning board, the amount of money we spend, do we, is it a positive return on investment? Yeah, costs us about 67,000 or whatever a year in salaries, we make 85. That's a, that's a great return on our investment for that department. Whether it functions right or not, it doesn't, and I look at the police department, the fire department, after grants, what we get? What's the return on investment? Are we getting our money's worth out of these people? And just about every one of them, electrical, building inspector, we get a good return. So they're a very positive addition to the town that really doesn't, by themselves, doesn't cost us anything that we're allocating. So that's my approach when I look at, are we, what's the return we're gonna get when we do something? Well, it doesn't have to be monetary. Is there a positive return to the town there?
But to Leah's point, it's, it's, we can't just, it, it, we need to look long-term, so.
Right.
Yes, maybe, we, and we need a plan for the maintenance, because if we don't maintain it, you get five, 10 years down the road, and you're stuck with an even bigger bill than you would've had if you had just planned and accounted for what you should be doing.
And I think that's where the school comes in.
Yes.
We have that $35,000, $1,000 cutoff, okay? I, I, I did a study one year, I think it was 2017. I asked Wachusett for how much money they spent on all three schools, Naquad, Glenwood, and, um, Central Tree. I added them all up that year. They spent about $8,000 on three schools. Seriously, I'm going to myself. You're not spending money on schools until it gets to a level, now this goes back a few years, okay? I don't expect it to be that way now under the new superintendent. But we have, that's what we have to take a look at. Are they really supporting our schools, or just asking us for money? Okay?
Yes.
Um, a couple other things that are in my brain, and I wanna throw out there, cuz it's late. Um, we've heard a lot, if you watch the financial sessions, the Sunday sessions in the library about economic development, Randy was just in here. So I would like to see this board kind of coalesce around economic development and making that a, a pointed, um, priority and commitment. Um, and how that looks, I think, can be a few different ways. Um, I'm happy to take, but I think we heard a lot from the public in those sessions that, well, why, why isn't the town doing more to bring money in? What, what have you done? What, why, 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 why? And so I think, um, we have the Economic Development Commission, who has started, um, some work. Well, we're in the process of hiring a new town planner. Um, we know that that position was very overstretched, um, previously. And so I don't have, obviously, the, the question of, of a, a staff person, um, to assist at some level. But, but there's other, there may be other opportunities. One of what we had talked about, or I had mentioned, was, um, grant funding for existing businesses, getting out and talking to the existing businesses, what's, um, using some ARPA money as like seed money for them. Um, but what's, what's preventing you from growing? Or what, what would you recommend your other business friends to come into town? What do you see? So kind of engaging the local business community more. Um, Rentland doesn't have the Rentland Business Association anymore, which kind of used to do some of that work for us. Um, so it's really, um, hasn't been, attention hasn't been paid to, in my.
Well, Austin, can I, can I ask you one question? The, the money that we put in to the state for, um, you know, act, for, for grant money or whatever. When, when will we know one way or the other if we get some of that?
Um, unfortunately, the state doesn't have to follow their balanced budget deadline like cities and towns that they impose, so, um. I don't know if the language from the conference committee has come out yet, but, uh, once you get to the conference committee, that gives you a, a pretty good idea of the.
And when is that?
If your marks, uh, it should be now.
Okay.
Um, but I don't believe that they've released.
So within the next six months, hopefully?
Hopefully, less than that, yeah.
Just thinking.
Yeah, I think best case scenario is that, you know, and most of the time, I think the past few years have been an exception because of the pandemic. But, um, the budget is usually finished mid-July.
Okay. And I'm just curious, is there any way, I don't know if you know already, can we get a list to give the board, all of us, an idea of what land the town has available? Like, we know we have those two lots, we, being the town, have the two lots, uh, that are tasked, the heights, I believe, on Maple. Those are the last remaining lots, I think, right, in that whole project?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? Where you go up to Naquad, right there, but, and there's the one on 68, right on the Holden line. Can we get a rough list? Um, you know, once we get a town planner or whatever, we can sit down and look, I don't know if you have that, um.
So actually, I, I, um, I was trying to get a handle on how much town owned property we had as well. So I actually asked the assessor for that, and they did give me the list. Um, what I was hoping to do was, was overlay that onto the, uh, to the map, the zoning map, just to be able to see what town owned parcels we have and what kind of zoning they are, so, um, once I finish that, I can share that.
Yeah, that's great. Just so we have an idea of, you know.
We've a lot, I was actually pretty surprised. We have a decent amount. Not all of it is.
I was just gonna say, what's the zoning on it? That's, that's been part of the problem.
But at least then, we can, as a board and as a town, look at it and say, should we market this heavily and sell it?
Yeah.
Or should we try to do something as a town, or at least, you know, we, cuz up until now, a lot of it's just hearsay. Oh, I heard we got that land over there and that, you know, but like you said, I don't know if that land off of 68 is, is buildable. I don't, I don't know.
No, and I think that that's a huge plus, because I think we haven't been good about intentionally marketing stuff. It's been a little bit more, it's here and what's gonna come versus.
I don't wanna be cruel.
Yes, you do.
But when we're looking at marketing town land, what is the purpose of the RDIC? That's their job.
Mm-hmm.
I thought they were just the heights.
No.
No.
RDIC was originally the Rutland Develop Industrial Committee, that oversees all town land to develop it. Then they created the Rutland Heights Property Committee, Subcommittee, which oversaw Rutland Heights. So my feeling is.
HPP.
RHPP or something, yeah.
HPPD.
It's a subcommittee, that's all. So my feeling is, we need to hold maybe that committee a little more responsible.
That goes back to my point, is that these are our, like, town goals, and we need the help of our appointed boards and commissioners to fulfill them. Because I think there had been such a heavy focus from previous boards for years on the Heights property. And so other stuff came and went, but, but not, not an intentional piece like the Heights. And so I one hundred percent agree, and that is, in my head, some of the, we can work better collaboratively. Um, and to Jen's point, getting everybody in the room, because RDIC and economic development can work very closely together with planning and conservation. And maybe recreation comes in, or maybe council on aging, or public safety needs something. So I think that there is a lot of value to, to that.
Whatever board or committee there is, if, it's like having those amounts on there for 15 years and keeping them there.
Yeah.
We need to know, we need to be more responsible, so.
Yep.
As a board, we need to look at these places and say, you've had this property for 15 years. What have you done? What has come in? Or you've done, your committee has been in charge of this for 12 years. Like, my committee, if I wasn't doing the job, I'd wanna be held responsible for it. I wanna know what the problems are, why we weren't doing, and I think as a board, that's our, that's our purpose too, for the town, is to say, what is wrong here? What's our return on investment? We gave you a piece of property, and I'm, and I'm not picking on the RDIC, but that's the biggest opportunity the town has for development, are those two things.
There was no oversight. That was my argument, the, not, discussion the last meeting, up against forming another committee.
Yeah.
You know, it sounds great, it looks great on paper, oh, look, we put a committee to, but then nothing ever.
There's no accountability.
There's no accountability of those committees. RDIC, and again, not to attack them, God bless them, they got that job up there, that's great. But 30 years to get a senior comp, that's absurd. 30 years fatigue, that's a beautiful piece of real estate. I find it hard to believe that, you know, and you hear all the rumors, oh, well, the woo socks, and that could be all nonsense, I don't know. But 30 years, I, I just, that's, you know, and that's not to criticize them personally, but there just was nobody putting a thumb on them, saying, what's going on?
Right, but if, if they couldn't get it done, then what could the board have done to help them get it done?
They just didn't pay attention?
I believe that the, the layout of the, of the land up there in the beginning, by the, the state, the senate and the house, they built it based on today. There was no tomorrow in their plans, okay? So in other words, okay, so RDIC basically continued to work based on that plan of today, and not into tomorrow. Okay, so you know, that, that caused some consternation among some people as well. And so, you know, I grew up in the neighborhood, I know the hospital territory like the back of my hand. Um, I know, you know, that there are properties out there that, um, are not usable. I know that there are properties out there that could be developed further. And just how much of this, um, how, uh, how many, how, how many homes is gonna use? I don't really know, but I think that, you know, their basic plan, and that's what they're working on now. And they work a lot of hours up there, and they're doing a lot of work.
So we need, we need measurable, measurable goals that we've been talking about for this. If they've got all this town property, they should be cataloging what it is. Is it buildable? Is, what, do we need to zone it for commercial uses? What, what are the steps that we need to take to show that progress? Has to go to town meeting, let's make this, zone this for commercial use, or whatever it may be. Uh, but we don't know what we don't know, so, and, you know, and again, so how can we help work with these other boards to get them to have whatever measurable goals?
And it doesn't always have to be about money.
Right, right.
This is one of the frustrations that the town planner had.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I've spoken with him, I had spoken with him previously a few times, because I was basically interested in the hospital area, because, like I say, I, I grew up in a neighborhood, and I know what's there, and what's not there, and what happened, and so on and so forth. And so, okay, so you know, I spent some time with David, and he had, he had some very good ideas. He really did. Um, to bring him to fruition was somewhat frustrating for him. So you know, there, there's, there has to be a spirit of cooperation between he and RDIC, and what is it, CMMP or something else like that? The Subcommittee up there.
A RHHP.
Oh, that's me.
That's the acronym.
Get you my acronym now.
Just one other thing that we touched on at the beginning, and then I wanna circle back to, cuz it's not on our list, and it's on our agenda, is managed growth. And I brought it up, um, oh, go ahead.
Can I just, uh, just one more thing before we, cuz I know we touched on it briefly, just the investment in capital, facilities and equipment.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I feel like every time I go into a town building, something's pointed out to me, uh, libraries, you know, there's something to go on with the floors, senior center, the roof project, uh, I walked into the wood studio the other day, there's water on the floor. So, uh, you know, I've had some conversations with, well, every town department. We have some building facilities and equipment needs. There's no question about it, I think we all know that. And, you know, the good thing is, over the next few years, we do have some debt service capacity, to be able to accommodate, um, debt to be able to, you know, maintain and repair and, and possibly new facilities as well. Uh, but also, we do have some funds from the Heights property to be able to kind of, maybe hopefully get us a, a jumpstart on some of these projects as well. If you think about, you know, feasibility study design and such, to be able to kinda get that, um, this project up and running and started. And then obviously, we talked about some of the available funds with some of the articles that may be able to help with some of these projects. We are, you know, this override budget approved some new positions, and right now, I don't know where to put some of these people. Um, so we have obviously some space needs as well for staff, boards and committees, meeting space. We're, I think we're very limited on meeting space, so I think, like everyone's mentioned, you know, planning for the future and growth, that also includes town departments, town staff, and our boards and committee needs, um, and the resident needs as well. Um, so I'm hoping that we can have some sort of goals to at least support politically from this board to get that process moving along for some of our buildings, um, to engage consultants or such, to be able to kinda study these buildings, our space needs analysis, and then maybe get some design work to present to a, a future town meeting.
Does that include evaluation of, call it renovation versus build new? Because we don't wanna keep sinking money into buildings that just.
Really are gonna cost more than in the long run.
The annex has come up a couple times, that building, I think we'll get more knocking that down than ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the annex is an interesting opportunity, I think, well, there, right now, um, I guess there was a proposal or a plan, I don't remember when it started, to have the regional dispatch center moved into the annex. And, you know, the good thing about that is, state 911 would completely pay for everything, completely rehab the building. So you think about town funds, zero town funds would be, also plans for growth, uh, I think it's a longstanding goal to grow that department. And, you know, the initial designs that they had for that building would be to accommodate that future growth, so you don't have to, you know, accommodate building to building. So there's possibilities, so for investment, to move the, and the couple of people in the annex to another space, possibly in town hall, that would leverage, you know, multimillion dollar investment from the state to completely rehab that.
Yeah, if I may, that department is one of our best return on investment departments there are out there. I mean, when we get all the money from all the other towns for the regional, compared to what it costs us to run that thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a huge benefit.
But, I mean, to your point, you know, Tom and Jen as well, I mean, the state also has a program for regional dispatch to completely pay for a new building.
Right, if we take on, I believe it's been explained to me, if we're able to get one more community.
Yeah.
They'll build an entire building for free.
So there's, so I think to answer your question, I think as a part of that analysis, and, and, you know, I think, thinking about the future and the growth, yes, I think that that would be a part of the, especially the feasibility study and the space needs analysis, is looking at our existing infrastructure and our assets and see, okay, well, can this, how is what we have for future growth, is this a reasonable project and a reasonable use of public funds to get this project up and running?
To go back, to tie in a couple things, if I may, Austin, to the town owned land, we don't, we have a lot, but not, uh, not unlimited supply. And so if we're not intentional about either obtaining more or maintaining some, if we have the opportunity to build a new building, where is it gonna go? If we have the opportunity to do a, a, a larger town project, we may not have the, the land space to do it. So that's something that we have to be mindful of, that yes, we wanna, we wanna market, we want to get that economic development piece in here. But we also need to either be mindful as additional properties come before us, that we may, actually, there may be value into making that push to obtain them for future, not right now, but down the road. Or, um, just know that, okay, the town owns no land, and what we have is what we have, and we have to make do wi, with whatever that is.
Right.
And so that's, um.
Well, there's like that lot for sale right off Main Street, across from the graveyard. I, I don't know much about the land, I just know it's, the ticket price is 250, and it's, I think it's 18 acres or so.
I think it's a lot of wet, I think, but I'm not sure.
Well, I think that, from what I heard, there's again rumor, I don't know, from what I heard, to get out to the land, I guess is quite a ways.
Yeah.
So the infrastructure, as far as power and water and everything, to get it out there, for most builders or for most developers, it's not worth the investment for that. I don't know if that would be different for the town.
Would that be something that, if we don't really care about how far it takes, the dispatch money that's available? We say, here's where we wanna build it, would they pay for that?
To buy, to buy the property?
Well, wasn't there an original idea?
If we own the property.
We own the property.
And say it's 5 million to take, to run it out there, get everything set up, would they pay for that? Or do they have certain criteria, it's just, no, we're not gonna do that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the details right now, but I think that's, you know, something in conversation, because ideally, I mean, you go down south, and, and there's, you know, and this is exaggerating, but there's like five centers that run like the whole state.
Oh, it's definitely the future, yeah.
So they're really looking to consolidate, and, um, I can say that we've already been approached by the state and communities that are interested in joining the program, so I think.
So it's not a stretch?
No, not at all.
It's probably gonna happen one way or the other.
Very realistic and very, um, imminent.
Well, cuz if I, if I may say, through discussions over the years, it had been talked about this lot right here, behind, um, right behind the church, right?
Library and church, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the church, right here, that lot right there, that's not really used for anything, and, and put the new building. And and put the new building right there, you know?
No, so I think that's a possibility. And you know, so they want um, you know, they not only, you know, build the infrastructure in the buildings, but all the associated technology and the assist with staffing. So you talk about the return on investment. That program just is
It's a big deal, yeah.
Huge example of something that's beneficial.
Can you confirm, is it just, would it just be a dispatch center or would it be a whole public safety building, like new fire?
Uh typically, they're just just.
But then that moves dispatch out of the current public safety and it doesn't buy a t- a ton of time based on growth and everything, but it definitely frees up additional space i- in that building. And then if there is conversations either to maintain the annex for something else or do some there, it it could free up other stuff.
The reason, the reason I mentioned that property is if we're looking to buy property, we need to have a plan behind buying that. Otherwise, the town is gonna, you know.
Right, why buy it if you don't know what you're gonna do?
If you don't know what you're gonna do.
And I think that's some of the struggle is that we, once we have a better handle on what we own and what is buildable, usable. Um, then then that's all well and good. And also we need to be mindful of planning becau- for for the future, as we've had this conversation, like we can right-size it for today and we know that full buildout is gonna put us at double or even triple the population of what we are right now. And so how does that look?
At one point in time, there was consideration of moving dispatch down to the hospital grounds. Just where you drive into off of Main Street on the right side. Um, at this point in time, I'm not sure that there's any usage plan for it, but again, I could be wrong there.
Uh for return on ROI, that'd be a terrible move for me, particularly when we have land that could be used. That that piece is very saleable. You know, we could get a lot of money for it, get a lot of revenue in taxes. Why tie that up with a non-revenue producing? We don't get any tax money from it. So to me, that's for town property, that's kind of.
What land is this?
Rutland, on the right-hand side by Moseo.
By the gas station.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
That's, yeah, particularly when we're planning to put a huge sports complex on. No, I've seen, I've been looking serious and talking to people about that.
Just one comment, Austin, for you, you were looking at the feasibility studies and everything, and this was one of my struggles, previous administrators, was they did the the space needs and feasibility studies, but it was just what what is this right now? And not for for any sort of growth or anything. Doing any sort of feasibility study or space space studies. Um, I think there was a grant that had funded doing a space analysis or something, but it was only what is this currently used for? It was the building study about what is what is it currently used for and what does it need? It wasn't to get it to code or it wasn't to get it.
That was the one Ron did?
And it wasn't, so that's my only, my only push is to that we're, when when we're doing all of this, that we're very forward-thinking and obviously we we're not gonna be fifty years forward-thinking. For some things, it should be in the back of our heads, but we have to be able to sell it to the town. But also know that if we build it for today, it's gonna be obsolete by the time it's actually built, like, so.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think you got it.
Um, can I just add one thing and and maybe it's I don't know where you put it, um, you know, we're just talking about this regional dispatch center. I think identifying other ways for regionalization is obviously something that.
Can I even just put it under modernized town government in some ways? Like, I know Rutland has kind of been on the forefront of regionalization and we do a lot and I think we've gotten a little stagnant just because we have so much.
I think there's a lot of opportunity that I love, it was mentioned, um, you know, by Randy, I mean, there's there's communities that approached me about the economic development position, for example, if we were to create that or express interest in creating that. Could that be a regional uh position? HR, I think I mentioned in my interview. Um, HR is something that it's already been modeled of other communities in the Commonwealth that have had a regional HR position, for example, so. I think we should consistently and continue to explore that.
Works well in Florida. Florida, I feel like everything's a regional system down in Florida and it works.
One thing a few years ago at um MMA that that some of the communities on the North Shore, like Beverly Danvers area, they regionalized um like internet. So they did their own internet. They're not with like Charter or Spectrum or anything. They did their own and they regionalized it. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation with with Spectrum and and all of that. And I know Worcester historically hasn't been happy with with them either and neither has most of Central Mass. So I don't know if there's any, if if there's no push to bring in um willingness, not from town, but just from industry to bring in an additional supplier. Um, if communities are at least willing to consider conversations about how that may or may not look. Um, may provide some some impetus also.
If I can step back a second and touch on the um regionalization, a couple of years ago, I was talking with Seth. And we were talking about how he could build out or put in through the CIPC an emergency dispatch center or emergency response where state police, federal, whatever, would come to this location. We would kind of be a regional place for the emergency disaster stuff. And we were trying to figure out how we could get that put into the public safety building unit. Of course, the buildout would be crazy. But if we could do something like that as part of the dispatch building, even creating a separate building would that also be maybe something we'd look at for uh fund money, free money from Homeland Security or whatever would take it? If we added that piece to it? Because I think where we're located is perfect for regionalization of something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could. We could make a bunker like what they have in Framingham. I've only seen pictures. But no, I mean, I think that, well, that's, I think the kind of thinking that um like innovative thinking that I think we should be doing when we're talking about the future of whether it's a, you know, regional nine one one center or or the town administrator's office or e- everything. We should be thinking big picture about that, so.
The the other thing, uh one of the goals, I'd like, I don't know if we can do it this year, but one of the goals I'd like to get on there is dealing with a municipal vulnerability plan.
I think we have a very basic one, but with DPW switch, I think municipal vulnerability and stormwater management.
I I attended that seminar they gave a couple of years ago and was amazed at how inefficient our municipality plan was in case of emergencies. And if we're gonna start building things or doing things, I think we need to start looking at that vulnerability as part of the overall plan, the risk factors.
And there's a great, but as you've known from attending that webinar, I mean, there's a huge statewide initiative. Um, and there's a lot of resources that are available to to use the talents for those.
Again, when you look at, just take dispatch and in that emergency, how else can we then use that to get state money to help the town become less? That's kind of where I'm.
One of, this just popped to my head, to that, for all available funds, we had talked about being part, that we're part of green communities. Um, and it was more specifically housing choice when we were talking about the number for the the building permits. But if we're not taking advantage for some of these um uh packs that we belong to, um, green communities, I think we take advantage of the the funding avail- that that has opened up. But housing choice, I'm not sure that the past few couple of years we have, is there value or not to maintaining that status? Um, if we're not taking advantage of the the available funds. So what do we belong to and what what available funds are we missing out on? Because we belong to, we are designated as as whatever. Um, but I think we had kind of talked about that before. Um, and I want to circle back to the managed growth because it ends. And so I want to get a sense from the board what the board wants to do and how we want to do it. So I had proposed, the way it was brought forth originally was um, there was a managed growth uh subcommittee that was working with the town planner and CMRPC. And it was a liaison, members from a sp- specific boards and commissions, maybe one or two at-large members, um, really driven kind of by a town administrator plan at the time and then also CMRPC. Um, that is how that bylaw came to be. We need, no matter what we decide, I think we owe it to the public to get the information out. Um, and so thank you, Austin and Dave and Lynn for pulling all of, and Smika for pulling all of the data that we have together. It's in our packets tonight. Um, but it ends, the current rate rate limitation bylaw ends um, May twenty twenty four. So I want to get a sense from this board what direction we're gonna go with that. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, my opinion on committees, we don't need any more committees, so, you know, we're the committee as far as I'm concerned.
I think we pretty much all agree on that.
Yeah, so let's work with the new town planner when that finally happens, hopefully soon, along with the town administrator. I think, you know, I've said in the past, and I don't mean to sound negative, I think the damage unfortunately is done. You you can't go backwards, but if we can do something legally, work with town legal, like an acreage min- minimum, like a two acre minimum, buildable land, if we can legally do that, then let's do it, give it to the town to vote on. The town could vote one way or the other, put it on the town floor. Let them vote. Um, and as far as the minimum building, we can we can stick with that. I think that works. It keeps its it it at least keeps us at the point where we can kind of keep up with it. As far as the already permits that have been given out, which have been given out, what, fifty six a day? I mean, I I feel like it's, you know, there's not much you can do about that.
Uh I I have a different view on permits, first off, but I'd like to hear from everybody else before I speak.
That's cheating.
No, my opinion is already formed. No, I mean, if you want, I'll tell you what I, my opinion. But I'd like to hear, because I've read through this thing several times, the bylaw, I mean, the uh bylaw. I read through the studies. I read through the report. And there's so much misinformation, misguided information in it. In one place, they use a ten-year number. In another place, they use a five-year number. In another place, they use a two-year number. Uh, they didn't use the numbers the assessor said was the value of the property. They went outside and used a different number, which lowered the assessed value of the property and caused it to look like it was costing us more money, when in reality of what, I mean, the whole if I was paper, I'd be embarrassed to have that printed on me. That's what I think of the report. Did I say that deliberately? No, but nothing made sense in it. Um, when the value of the property, when the value of the property at the time, the assessor says was around three hundred and fifty thousand per property and they valued it two seventy one. And they say it's because we thought we used a foil that was best for Rutland. Really? You're not gonna use our numbers from our own assessor? You're not gonna use the school numbers from Wachusett? You're gonna go outside and use a different system so that your numbers are higher? Just the whole thing smacks of.
So I had conversations with with CMRPC about this because I had struggles with their population projections, even at the time that they presented the s- the study, because they were projecting, I think it was gonna be twenty forty that we would hit ten thousand. And I was like, there's absolutely no way that's gonna happen. We're gonna be there in the uh five years, like twenty twenty five was like. And so throughout working with master plan and and getting to know to know people a little bit better, I've had conversations and that these formulas were huge disservice to us.
Absolutely. And they say it several places, we want you to understand, this is not accurate. This is just a forecast, but there were pieces that were taken from it that pushed the issue of managed growth. We gotta do it. But it wasn't a managed growth policy. They specifically stayed in there. It was a subdivision growth policy. So Harmony Homes, hundred and forty-two units, were not included in the formula. Any of the senior housing, A and R were not included in the formula. All they targeted, how can you target a specific thing without looking if you really are managed growth? And then they said, we're gonna look ten to twenty years out. They lied. They didn't do ten to twenty years. Everything that they was in there was mixed, convoluted, everything. I I wouldn't have printed this. I would not have accepted this and had it printed. I would have had something done with it. Now, do we need managed growth? The only way I know we're gonna need it is if we go back and we look at the last five years. Did the projections that we thought were gonna happen really happen that we should have had managed growth in place? So if it didn't, do we need a new study now for the next five years?
I I think that that's a hard question to ask because the the rate limitation bylaw has been in place for the last five years or the last four years. So to get that data and it was COVID, so.
No, 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 you're talking about permits, not building. Building is different. You, what Clee Blair did, when the sewer moratorium went in, okay, he went out and got like three hundred permits on his property permanently. They are there, four hundred.
Some of those are from the seventies that were still.
Build those out. There were no, and so we give thirty-five permits. Well, the thirty-five are only for new building. And most of it's gonna be A and R. Uh, you know, you have a road and you put a house in, that's exempt from this bylaw. So unless we do something, this this whole thing is inaccurate to me unless we look at the last five years and say, how many bill, how many permits did we issue? And actually, how many buildings were built? Because, huh? Are those buildings or permits?
Uh, these were, uh, these were, once they were built, okay, this is um.
So now you say to yourself, if you look at these numbers, these were permits issued.
No, yeah, so I I, because I did ask Lynn that, um, and these were um, new constructions that were built.
Okay, so you have thirty, so thirty-seven, fifty-two, seventy-nine. So as we go back to dates, twenty-one, twenty, seventy, we have a lot of permits issued. But how many actual buildings? Because that's what students will live in, that's what pe- population will live in. It's they don't live in permits. So how many buildings were, and what was the actual effect? Did we actually lose money in town because our new home value decreased because of that? Did we gain value because the buildings that were built were now bigger homes, more expensive homes? You gotta dig into the details before you start putting a bylaw back into the town that is, has done nothing or very little. So that's what I'm saying. We gotta look at it, not just say, oh, it did its job. We don't know if it did its job on a few numbers.
Well, and this has been my my complaint since the the bylaw was passed, was that that the that no one wanted, that the the board then did not want to follow up to see, to do any sort of tracking, to see, to do this as we're doing. So I one hundred percent agree that it needs anat- some analysis and we need to go to to the town and and provide this information so that they can say, yes, at minimum, the the rate limitation by law is of value. So we'll extend it for another five years and hold us, not us, but the board, the town administrator office accountable to to continue work forward or not as to what what that looks like. We know a lot coming out of the master plan is that there's a lot of interest in 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 maintaining some sort of managed growth and and smart growth, smart growth, sustainable growth. Um, and in providing, while providing opportunity for economic development. Because I think oftentimes, single-family home residential development came at the cost of economic development because economic development piece took more work. And it was seen as quick cash because it's new growth money, but without any consideration as to what the long-term expense to the town is going to be.
Just my school, all those families that come in with their two, three kids, that their property taxes don't cover their kid's contribution to the school system. It's all
You're right, because if you came home with two kids, that's a fifteen thousand dollar charge to the town on average for two kids versus a six thousand dollar tax bill. I understand that doesn't matter. But when you look at, see, I I'm gonna show a part of myself I normally don't show, and that is all I looked at this, when you say we don't want any or we're gonna cut back building, what you say into a population is, we don't want you here in this town. We can't afford you. We don't want you and your kids. Find some other place to live. Because this town isn't smart enough to figure. Because this town isn't smart enough to figure out how to bring you in. That we want you as part of this town and still be able to do what we need to do. We're not smart enough to do that. That's what it tells me. So you could stop the growth completely, you could take it away, but. Over the next five years, you're not gonna see a lot of building going on. You're just not. Banks have been tougher on interest rates, uh, that's, the value of homes has gone up. Uh, the cost of inflation, if it doesn't go down, is gonna, is gonna not be able to afford. You're not gonna see a lot of building going on. What building you will see is stuff that's already been permitted. New permits aren't gonna change that. I talked with all the builders out there. On average, some builders still have two hundred permits left to go. On an average of fifty five, sixty permits a year? You got years before this, we're gonna renew it for another five years and it may not even be worth it for four of that five? Why are we doing that to the town? I, I, I mean, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. What I'm saying is, we didn't look at the raw, true numbers.
Is it gonna do what we think it's going to do or what we want it to do?
Right, so they said, okay, within, well, they said, we're gonna have four hundred permits. They're gonna be used up in a short amount of time. Well, they haven't even been half used up yet. A and Rs haven't, uh, you know, are no, the average builder, the smaller builders, we have no problem getting permits. We can put in all these houses we want with thirty five years, thirty six years, not a problem for us. Cause you can't, if you're a decent builder, you're not, one of them I spoke to, I said. They're afraid you're gonna build a hundred houses this year. He goes, I would retire if I could build a hundred houses this year. He says, right now, we got maybe sixteen on the block. That's what we're looking at halfway through the year. So you're not looking at this cra- so that's what I'm saying is, if we're gonna go for it, we really need to look at this thing again. I don't know if we wanna spend any more money on it. Uh, I mean, I'm disappointed in what CMR PC did here, so maybe we don't go back to them again to get the information. But, I mean, you can read it for yourself. I'm just, I, 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 I'm disappointed. That a lot of the information didn't stay on track. If we're gonna look at a ten year, let's take all the information based on a ten year, not go two year for this and five year for this. And really drill down and accept towns' information, not the metropolitary information, so to speak, as an example. That's all I'm saying. And I don't mean to raise my voice, but I'm just, I wish, I wished I had. I wish there was more there that I read that made sense to me. It, the numbers just don't add up for me. And I don't care whether, I don't care about a builder or not a builder. I'm not one. I really don't care. I care about which, are we being truthful with the town in the bylaw? That's what I care about.
And I think, uh, for, for me personally, a lot of this was information that I had been asking for over the course of, of years. And not been able to get, i- is it doing what we thought? Because we know a lot of those subdivisions were, were grandfathered, were exempt. And so, but now looking forward, how much more is still exempt? Because they've been building for the past five years, some of those exempted. So I think that there are questions to answer, to ask and answer. And I think that there are other avenues that could potentially. Following master plan, do something more sus- create a more sustainable town. We can. Blast and, and build out fully and entirely and ha- with residential housing, have no space for economic, for any sort of economic growth. And then we have no new growth money coming in either, and we just have. More and more and more bills and so.
There were also issues with water.
Right.
Massive issues with water.
And sewer.
I mean, you know, moving forward.
Can I tell you something? If there was a massive issue with water and sewer, why are we building a hundred and forty two senior homes? Why? We haven't built out the infrastructure, we haven't, uh, put in more water, and we haven't, why are we building a hundred and forty two homes? See, even senior homes, they use water and they use sewer.
Right.
Why are we doing that if we have such a massive problem with water and sewer? We really don't. You know, we've got plenty of capacity there. I spoke with Joe before he left. We have a decent amount of capacity there, even with a hundred and forty two. In fact, more sewer and water reserves were set aside for Rutland than they're actually going to use. We're actually gonna have an excess when those hundred and forty two get built out.
I feel like that's not how we made it sound to us when he used to come up with names, but.
So I know that, that when we were dealing with the water sewer moratorium and, and everything. We had allocated a certain amount for the development of the heights. And one of the questions with a hundred and forty four homes going into the heights through RDIC and HPPD. Were, how much of that capacity are those hundred and forty homes taking? Because that, that was kind of allocated for the heights property, because if we bring in another one or two commercial entities or, or something. They're gonna have less, because the thought wasn't that it was going to be residential up there. So, so it was, it's always been a conversation. And, and I, I would argue that I don't think that we're golden. We only have one water source. And, and it's spring fed and, and that's, that's what it is. And so while oh, we're okay right now for what we have and what we have planned. We, in my mind, in my opinion, and in talking with Joe and, and my understanding of water and sewer. Is that we don't have this unfettered amount of water sewer to go everywhere. And, and that's some of the considerations, I think, when the previously was with the water sewer moratorium. Was we had to do stuff because the state was like, yo, you're in trouble. And then going forward, how, how do we, at what point do we just say no more water and sewer? Because that's a very real consideration.
And I think that's where I'm looking to go and say, number one, does this make sense? Number two, do we have the right information? And number three, where do we go from there? One way or the other. I mean, I'm not here to say yes or no tonight. What I'm here just to say is, I was very disappointed in the report. A lot of the stuff there, I mean, they predicted there'd be another five hundred kids in school by now. On top of that, and if you look at the school numbers from Wachusett, we had maybe a hundred and fifty increase or two hundred increase, not five hundred. So their figures were so bogus in many ways that it's like, it was almost like scare tactics. The way it was presented and the way I read it, so. And I, I'm not blaming anybody, but I just found, you dig into the numbers, don't make sense.
So I guess my question is, I got no to, forming any sort of subcommittee. And that this board will continue to look at legal options as well as the current data that we have. And then, and work forward. Is that uh?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, for me, I, to agree with what Harry said as far as, let's not just. Get, you know, form something so that it looks good. Let's try and figure out a way to effectively come up with a plan that. You know, I don't, I don't think many people, if any, would agree that we should do everything we can to try and kinda pump the brakes a little bit on, on uh, subdivisions and stuff. So that we can look more towards maybe economic development in other ways. But again, if that's not doable, then, then, you know, let's sit down with the experts and the new town planner and. Come up with legitimate wor- ideas that work.
Right.
So that like you said, when, when people can look back and say, we're, we're doing it because of this, you know.
And I'd like to see, um, this is probably getting more into some planning board territory. But to your point of how many you were talking about, you know, minimum lot sizes. I'd like to, I've, I've been trying to locate our open space subdivision. And I, if it's what I was able to find, there's like nothing in it. Um, and I, I've, uh, again, my, my father was on the planning, he's still on the planning board down in Chano, so he's, he's an engineer, he's. I, I talked to him about this stuff.
You can pick his brain.
Exactly. They've got this giant, they're my previous town, they giant open space subdivision bylaw. That has, yeah, a whole lot of its, you know, minimum lot or lot sizes. It's got, you know, twenty foot buffer zone of trees that you have to maintain. It's got, you know, so, cause I think that's part of what I. Also don't like about these giant subdivisions is they just go in and they clear cut everything. There's, you know, very, very little town available use, so we, you know, what can we have that's still available for the town? Maintaining the quaintness of the town, the small town feel. So is there ways that, and, and part of this, uh, open space subdivision is there's, uh, the way they have it structured is. Um, there's some benefits to the contractors, you know, there's, you know, road, you know, um, considerations, you know. That will reduce the front edge of your properties, so you've got less road that you have to deal with and maintain if you do X, Y, Z. You know, things like that, so, um, you know, but is that possible, you know, part of this, you know, managed growth where if we're talking about more open space? More, you know, minimum lot restriction, you know, bigger lots, you know, is that gonna help with some of this as well? But still bring in the growth, you know, are, these might be larger properties, higher property taxes, things like that.
The way this is explained to me by somebody, that Rutland is very welcoming or very, um. I mean, there, there are houses built on, on swamps and, and the town didn't have to issue those permits. They chose to issue, but legally, they had every right to say, no, it's a swamp. I mean, there were legal.
Yeah.
There, there was, there were legal issues that the town could have said, nah, you know, we're gonna hold off on that permit. They chose not to. So a lot of these committees and boards over the past, I think have, have, uh, I don't even know the terminology, but very friendly. When it comes to, uh, issuing some of these permits. And, and I think that's a big problem too, like. So, uh, you know, it's classic Rutland, the committees working, you know, against each other or. And, and that's, that's what.
And it comes back to hurt the town because we've had, how many times have residents come in that they're upset that their, that their house is on a private way? And that's, you built, you bought a house on a private way and, but then they're petitioning us to accept their road.
Right, right.
Or, or whatever, and, and the, the developer made the decision to not do it as a public way. Because the developer didn't wanna meet those standards. And so it's in my argument with the sewer pump stations is, they cost a lot of money when they fail. And, and they all, they're all mechanical and they have an end life and we're starting to see stuff happen. And while there's some money set aside in water and sewer that the rate payers pay. If everything were to fail or it was a catastrophic failure, that falls on all of us, whether we have water or sewer or not. And so we're accepting all of these, these plans and allowing the water and sewer or whatever. But there's no contingency or, or funding set aside or, or anything to address.
The long term, yeah.
So that's.
Why does it cost you as much as your house taxes pretty quick?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess my point is, we need to dig into the numbers.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Really.
Yep, yep. But I hear no subcommittee, so I have it up there to contin- to continue looking at it. And that's going to be something that we work on as, as a board, but we're not gonna form a subcommittee or anything. And we'll, we'll look to staff because I'm sure Dave and Lynn are gonna be huge assets and then when the, the new town planner joins.
So I, I think Austin has a good grasp of what we're looking for and to do and.
I do.
I think he does. So I think that he can certainly bring us the good information we're looking for. Find it, we don't have.
I think we have plenty of qualified professionals already in town. We don't need to bring in another gaggle of people to say, I, you know, I just don't think so.
You know, you can go to bank, uh, you can go to the assessor's office, go to Andy and say, hey, what's been our, over the last five years? What's been our new growth number for value and how has that changed over the last five years? And we know it's gonna be up because the cost of homes went up more, so the assessed value is gonna be greater. So we can get those numbers very easy to look at it, so.
So anybody else have any, we have kinda ARPA funds, outstanding articles and all available funds. And opportunities that we may or may not be missing out on. Transparency and accountability, that's especially the financial piece, but also with projects and just kind of everything going on in town. Professional development, modernizing town government, um. Efficiencies through technology, improve staff morale, citizen engagement, investment in capital. Then economic development, the municipal homeability plan, and then managed growth. So I think some of these, it's a lot. This is a lot. I think some of these are very targeted to, um, Austin, to town administrator and staff a little bit more. Um, that, that we're saying for us as a board, that it's a priority for them to spend time on. Um, and some of it is stuff that we as a board need to be intentional about, um, visiting. On a frequent basis in meetings. Anybody have anything they want to add? Comments?
I, I don't know how to. The financial planning piece, long-term financial planning. Back in two thousand eighteen, Tom Rochella, who was the chair of the finance committee, said in his annual report. That one of the tasks of his committee is to create a long-range plan. So I don't know where he came up with that or how he came about it. I don't know if it's in a policy or bylaw, but it never happened. So I give him credit for doing that, but if we are going to do a long-range plan. Then I guess somehow we need to get the finance committee to understand they need to do long-range planning. And they're not just a budget goal year to year type of thing.
Ties into financial policies, that's part of what the financial policy state is, what is, I think, the different boards. What are their involvement in that process?
Right.
You know, whose job is it? Is it the fin- finance committee's job? What, what is our purview? What is?
Cause I think they, if they had a longer range goal, it might make their budget easier and they'll look at it. So I mean, I feel bad for them because they're struggling every year with a budget. When, and here we are now discussing long-range planning as a board. And I felt maybe that was their responsibility way back when too, to look at that. So.
So I haven't heard.
How involvement we get with them now.
I have not heard from, um. I, I don't remember hearing from any FinCom members that they view long-term as their purview. They view kind of current year and next year and not so much. The, the longer term.
You know what's funny? If you read some of the other towns or cities fi- um, financial, uh.
Policies?
Huh?
Poli- the policies or?
You're gonna find out that a lot of them have long-range plans and are part of their policy.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't surprise me.
So, but I mean, we're, we're, we're taking the step now, so now it's our charge.
And, and the, the few towns that I know of that have it are, are professional staff. It's, they have a, a deeper professional financial team than, than we have, but it's professional staff. And it's not, uh, elected or appointed boards and commissions that, that sit on that. It's very, um, partially because there's always turnover in appointed and elected boards. Um, and also because it's, it's a professional level. Um, they, they view it as a professional level job, um, and with e- expertise, specific expertise. So, um. But.
So, no, forget it, what could say?
What?
No, not gonna say it. No. So if that's the case, do you think? That the finance committee should not be appointed by the moderator?
Peter, can you mute?
I've never understood that one.
That, I, I, I raised my eyebrows when I, I realized that too, to be honest with you.
So if we wanna be more professional. Does Randy go about, or the moderator, forgive me, does the moderator go about taking applications for the finance committee? Review it, going through Austin? I'm not saying he can appoint, but I'm saying should we be looking at it differently? If we're going to look for a more professional financial that needs to do long-term planning.
Well, and I think, I think some of your questions with bylaw and charter. A, a lot of the pushback has been on the, on the FinCom side of things. And what FinCom's role is and how it's defined in bylaws or a charter. And so I think that that's, um. The, a, a, a very contentious piece of, of bylaw discussions. And even, um, and, and charter discussions because.
Nothing against the finance committee. I mean, they have a tough job to do. I wouldn't, I would not even wanna sit on that committee. But if, and, and nothing against the people there, but if we are looking, like you say, we hire professional staff. If we are looking. if we are looking for professionals in town, even individual citizens who have a good degree of financial acumen for themselves, is that something that we should be looking at? Or the moderator should be looking at, or we should be advising somebody on? If that is what we need to coincide with us to develop a long range.
Or at least coming up with, again, as part of the financial policies, are there certain, call it qualifications that we like to see in members of the committee?
Right. I mean, I know it's tough to get people to sit on the finance board.
I know, I know.
And I will
It's tough to get on anymore.
Tough to get on any, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And I will say, I think the the current makeup of FinCom, there are a number of financial professionals on on that
That's my feeling as well, yeah.
that committee, um, but I
But I, I kind of agree with Harry. It's nothing against the individual people we're talking about.
Right, no, 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 and
But it's kind of a strange thing that, why does the moderator get to select the fin-? I I don't know, then maybe there's a reason, I don't know.
Is that the way in other towns?
Maybe it was put in seventeen thirty nine.
It might have been, yeah, I I don't know. Is that common in other towns? Does the moderator were appointing the guy of finance? I don't know.
It depends, uh. It depends, like, uh, Winston was appointed by moderator, Wes Boilston is appointed by select board.
So it's definitely different. Yeah, and and that's fine, I just, again, I'm not picking on you, Randy.
No, but my whole, my whole comment was here, was that Tom had made a comment in the annual report that they should be doing a long-range financial planning, and they didn't. So is there something the board can do to help them get on that track? So they're with us on the same plane here as we start looking at long-term financial planning? That was my whole
And and I haven't, I, in conversations that I've had, it seemed like they very much viewed their role as not long-term. And I had actually approached at one point having them serve, like, a member serve on this long-term financial planning committee if it were to go forward. And they're very adamant, their bylaw is very strict that they cannot, they can't be a town employee, they can't be serve on any other board, commission, subcommittee, whatever, um, and so
Has been an ongoing discussion for a long time.
I asked that question on the board with Peter. Can I still serve on this if I receive a stipend? He said, no, you're receiving, you can sit on any committee. So I think that should apply to them as well.
It's in their bylaw. It's it's in their bylaw, so
Though we can change that.
Town meeting can change that.
Right.
Yeah, well.
But, so, I think if, I don't hear, it's after nine, so we've had three hours. So if I don't hear any complaints, um, I would be okay to bless this to Austin and Tamika and I know Tamika's gonna watch the recording and get minutes, so anything my notes don't capture, Austin's notes don't catch her, she'll pull. Um, and then kind of collate, a lot of it, Austin, I think, is in your your document that you provided to us. And then there's pieces that we definitely added, um.
One thing I just wanna make sure, and it's probably covered in multiple of these, is just the schools. Um, you know, Darren even made a comment last meeting, we're already talking about a new school, Naqwa is not not just renovating, but new school.
Right.
Um, so just again, long-term maintenance of town buildings, including schools, and not just maintenance, but safety, I wa- I would say safety.
The other two schools are fairly new, right?
Even Lynn would, I mean, Lynn was newer.
We put a lot of money in Naqwa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lynn, what I think is fifteen-ish years, maybe.
Naqwa and I think, what, Thomas Prince are the two oldest in the district.
Yeah.
Super old, 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 but. But I just, I don't wanna lose sight of the schools and making sure that the buildings have proper maintenance, parking lots, sidewalks. I saw the sidewalk in front of the school got redone, I was like, oh.
Yeah.
I was just complaining to my husband about that, walking up for an event at the school, I was like, the one kids so wild on this, it's happening.
So I added to the the financial piece, but we had it under investment in capital also, so.
Security, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Security systems.
Again, I I don't, I'm still
You know, you know what's funny on the security systems? I was working with David Knocky.
Yep.
And, uh, two years ago
I know he put in so much time.
Two years ago, he came to CIPC and said, can you help us get safety equipment in there? I said, sure, we can. We can look at that, and I mean, it's a safety issue for the school. So we we looked at it and, what you said, shut it down. Because they say, we're gonna deal with it with the state, we're gonna put it in all the schools. And what happened? It ended up costing us ten times more money.
Yeah. And it takes ten times longer because you have to organize it among thirteen schools and it's, it's
Right. That's what upset me. I was, you know.
Anytime the state gets involved or something, yeah.
Uh, real quick question. What are we doing next meeting?
So
He's gonna organize that, where are we gonna go? Where do you see us going from there?
Yeah, so he'll organize this probably in July. One of our July meetings, we will have this organized and go over it in a meeting and then hopefully ratify slash adopt it officially. And then, um, and then we'll we'll, but this I think is the the consensus, it seems like, among the board.
That's a good ten-year plan.
Well, I was gonna say, I, you know, I think this is a very good, I like everything that's here. But again, I just wanna be able to have, be able to report progress on measurable goals. How are, how are we gonna take this and transfer that into showing?
Uh, I have a question for you guys. The screen that we have out in front of the town hall.
Yeah.
Can we use that to update, uh, every time I go by, I don't see anything that says up the, oh, the town is doing this or the town. I don't see anything there. Is there anything we can do to update that? It says, oh, yeah, the town just approved a a this, or the town just decided that we're gonna do, uh, to efficiency the town to get better report, just some couple, I don't know if we can, if it's even worth it, we can do it.
By Paxton Police Station, look at their board and you can see the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, main difference between Paxton, as I drive by that every day.
I understand, but you know, I'm familiar with Paxton as well, so, okay, so.
No, so but I'm just trying to say, the main difference is that, you know, they advertise, for example, select board meeting tonight. Do that. Um, they advertise, hey, annual town report published. Um, maybe Tamika. Tamika's, I think, so Tamika manages the 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 board now, so um, community organizations can make a request to the town administrator's office.
We have a policy for it. There is a policy.
There's a form to fill out if you wanna put something on there.
Um, but you know, I do agree that I think that that's also a great venue to, you know, put other information that would be helpful. You know, you think about, uh, select board establish draft goals, go on town website.
Right.
You know, or select board meeting tonight, town website.
I mean, I like that you you're always posting town administrator on Facebook. That's, that's great too.
I've never seen it so so active.
Right, and that's great. Uh, you you're always, I'm assuming it's you or Tamika or whoever, the town administrator, you know, you're you're sending messages, that's good. I mean, if we can get more, probably one, maybe two percent of the population is watching this meeting or will watch this meeting. Nobody's, you know?
Yeah.
Other than us and a handful of other people.
And we need, we need to do it in small, easy to digest.
Right.
You can't just have
No, people will
They're never gonna read it, so you need to
Right, yeah. Yeah, no one's reading a long paragraph, just, okay. We did this.
There's a lot of communication venues that, um, that I think we can, we could take advantage of. I know, um, I mentioned the poll that I wanna start, just town administrator updates to be able to talk about a lot of these things. So, you know, select board establish their goals, draft goals, go on the town website, there's that. Um, I think that there's an opportunity to take advantage of, um, those tax bills, those beautiful tax bills that everyone's gonna get soon. Some sort of a a one-page where to talk about the happenings of town. So communication, I think, well, it's not already on there, that's
Yeah, transparency and accountability.
Just finding ways, and that's that's something that I wanna do as well, is is, uh, just improve on that. And that's, you know, the website project is one.
That'll be huge.
I think that'll be huge.
That's a huge start. And as a part of that, I mentioned as well, there's a communications guide that will be deliverable from that project as well to present to town departments and boards and committees to enhance their communications as well, so.
Yep.
Uh, if I may, just to the town, I would like to say that personally, I think the board did a very good job working with us tonight. I think we all had great comments and we all had the town's interest at heart and did a great job.
Yeah, I thought the dialogue was really good.
Oh, sorry, I left Austin out. Austin did a good job too, okay.
Thank you, Austin, for all the pre-work that you that you and your office did and it's helpful, the department heads, 'cause I know it was a lot, so.
So we're not, when it comes to ARPA funds, we're really not gonna make decisions next time. We're just gonna see how we wanna lay out this plan and where we wanna go. Okay.
I think so. I mean, I I personally don't feel comfortable based off of our conversations tonight and kind of, we don't have some answers yet for everything.
Right.
Um, making decisions on stuff because I think that that's probably going to be either a large chunk of a future meeting or a separate special meeting. Also, because I think everybody has hands in the pot and, um, how best to to do what, what's gonna benefit the most of of town.
Priorities, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So that's my, I mean, I would rather, and and hopefully by mid-July, we'll have some input from the state what what additional funding we may be getting from some of our, um, requests.
Yeah, let's hope for good news.
Nice job today, Leah, thank you.
Yes.
No, thank you guys, because this is a great dialogue and it's hard and it's long, but I appreciate it. And I think it provides the opportunity for ideas to flow and and everything, so I appreciate it.
Austin, thank you.
Yeah.
I know you're doing a lot.
Yeah.
Only fourteen to twenty hours.
Full opens tomorrow if anyone wants to go for it. It's, no, I went into that, they stocked up on all the
Oh, yeah. They're doing the best with what they have down there, that's for sure.
And, uh, just so you know, I mean, you might, you can adjourn, but, um, the, uh, that, um, infrastructure project that was behind town hall is complete now, so they finished the paving, they they planted some grass. It looked, it actually grew in pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So I'll done with that, so we'll see, um, how well that looks.
And I don't know if you know, they got somebody to donate, I think, I don't wanna say the name 'cause I'm not sure, but they did, not only the mouths, they did the basketball court.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's Matt, uh, what's his last name? Benoit.
He's a Vitamatic, yeah.
Yeah.
Wachusett, Seale, yeah. And they're gonna line it and, uh, 'cause I yelled at a teenager the other day, 'cause he was walking on it.
No, it's good. Yeah, well, that's, uh, I think in advance of their bringing back that basketball tournament.
Yeah, the summer basketball, like, no, I'm, ah, there's so much opportunity, there really is.
Yeah.
So much. I just, I I hope I live long enough to see something done.
I mean, this this town is a very, very recreational town.
Absolutely.
And it's only gonna get more so, like I said, with all the the younger families coming in now, it's just, yeah.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, I need a motion first.
Oh, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Aye.
Then, second by Tom, adjourned at nine twenty-two.
All right.